I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of December 21st, 2022. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available online or at the Planning Department, Room 213. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the door at the back of the room. If you are parked in the parking lot across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy of those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cell phones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission action today is final on the following items. 5.1B Use Permit 22013 and 5.1C Special Permit 22038. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held December 7th, 2022. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second, Edens.
Shelley?
Core.
Abstained.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
There are no items on the consent agenda, so I will ask Shelley to call for the request for deferral.
We have received written communication on behalf of staff requesting a deferral for item 4.2 Pre-Existing Special Permit 23J. This is to amend pre-existing special permit 23I, changing the boundary of the special permit to build parking lots on property generally located at 5033 and 5435 Huntington Avenue and 2427 North 56th Street. This would delay public hearing and action to the January 11th, 2023 Planning Commission hearing.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'm sure. Zoom audio is not working for those who are seeing on Zoom.
Thank you.
I move to approve the deferment for special permit 23J, the pre-existing special permit.
Second, Joy.
Shelley?
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Is there anyone here today wishing to speak on pre-existing special permit 23J? If so, you are welcome to testify today instead of waiting until the public hearing, if that is what you choose to do. Okay. And gentlemen in the, in the audience noted that Zoom was not working. We have been told that there is a, we're having trouble with internet connection in the facility today, so we will do our best to accommodate that as we move forward. We will now proceed to public hearings. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to rebut the testimony, and the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members or included as part of the record, please provide that information to the clerk for distribution. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Plan, Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the Commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
Yes, first item is item 4.1 Change of Zone 22038 from H3 Highway Commercial to R2 Residential District for 35 acres as part of the Coyote Lane Plan Unit of Vennlight PUD with up to 32 dwelling units and up to 21,500 square feet of commercial floor area with associated waivers consisting of 7.17 acres in total, more or less on property generally located at north of O Street between North 66th and North 70th Streets along MOPAC Trail. Staff, note, staff memo was sent out 12/20 identifying revisions of approval as agreed upon by staff and applicant. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No. George?
Thank you. George Wesselhoff, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. The general location that we're talking about here is between North 66th and North 70th Streets along the MOPAC Trail, generally north of O Street, and the request is for a planned unit development with up to 32 dwelling units and 21,500 square feet of commercial floor area. The PUD total area is approximately 7.1 acres. Existing zoning includes H3 Highway Commercial along North 66th Street and R2 zoning extending eastward to North 70th Street. As part of this proposal, there is a small area in the northwest part of the site that is being proposed to be rezoned from H3 to R2 to allow for some of the proposed residential where it's not already zoned, R2. In terms of access to the site, there would be access on both North 66th and North 70th Streets. There would be a proposed rollover curb on North 70th Street for emergency access vehicles, which was worked out previously with LTU and LFR. Part of the site, especially the western area where there's the commercial, is located in a 100-year floodplain. Dead Man's Run is to the south, and so that includes the commercial area, but also a few residential units that will be required to be elevated out of the floodplain. And that's one of the waivers that is requested. There are multiple waivers requested. The first, or one of them is a waiver for stormwater detention due to the proximity of Dead Man's Run, which is a floodway. And as a condition of approval for that waiver, they'll have to provide justification for pre and post-development comparisons. Some of the other waivers include two that are related to the vet facility, or one of the, the outdoor area facilities. This is Lot 34, this is North 66th Street, so in the northwest part of the site. There is a waiver requested from the setback for outdoor areas for animals. The waiver is requested to go from 200 to 150 feet. There are existing homes to the north that are set back approximately 40 feet from their, their rear lot lines, which would be an effective setback approximately of 190 feet from the outdoor areas. Another waiver, which there was the memo that was mentioned, has to do with the number of animals for the outdoor areas for the facilities, and the request previously from the applicant was to increase the number of animals from three to 10, and after review, the request is only needed to be four. And so that request is okay with the Health Department and the Planning Department. The request would specifically be tailored to veterinary facilities, which according to the Health Department have good track records of operation and not having complaints. Some of the other waivers include a waiver from the requirement that parking has to be located on the same lot as the use, which requires the parking. That's not an uncommon waiver and is justified. There's also a waiver request for setbacks to allow internal lot lines of zero with a 20-foot exterior setback, and then residential setbacks of three feet for front, side, and rear. And then there's also waivers for sanitary sewer location, sanitary sewer running opposite street grade, and light trespass internal to the project, which these are common waivers. Prior to this timeframe of today, there were meetings held earlier this year related to this project. The City Council, I should say, prior to this year in 2018 approved a change of zone, which was change of zone 18009, which was, which was the North 66th Trail to Rail zoning update, which rezoned the property as part of a larger PUD at that time from I-1 Industrial to H3 Highway Commercial PUD. And this was important from the standpoint of removing the prior obsolete industrial zoning and set the stage for this new PUD, which has the mix of commercial and residential development, which was the intent. The developer presented to the Meadow Lane Area Residence Association, or MARA, on May 10th of this year. The developer reviewed the site details and took questions from the neighbors. The City Council in August of this year approved the related comprehensive plan conformance related to the redevelopment plan for the property. And then last month, the project was presented at both the Urban Design Committee as well as the Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee due to the presence of the MOPAC Trail. And I'll just finish on that note as far as the, the MOPAC. It was noted in the staff report that no new conditions need to, need to be added to the PUD respective of the trail because there's an existing trail easement that protects the trail. No structures can be built in that easement. The trail cannot be compromised. It's a 20-foot wide easement with a 10-foot trail, which is centered in the easement area. One of the conditions of approval from Parks and Recreation Department is to add a trail connection at one of these locations, which would be midpoint roughly in the development, so there would be connectivity to, to the trail. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Questions for George? So it seems to me that there's, the only conditions of approval that may be up for debate, if you will, are, are those relating to the stormwater connection? Is that correct? Or the stormwater needs?
So LTU Watershed reviewed that, and it's, it's conditional approval as long as they provide the information that LTU Watershed requested
Okay.
to their satisfaction.
And at this point, that's kind of still in process in terms of them providing that information?
Yes. We do have LTU Watershed here if, if needed.
Okay, great. Anyone have anything else? Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Testimony from the applicant.
Nate Burnett, Reg Engineering, 601 Old Cheney Road, Suite A, here in Lincoln. This project's been a long time coming for Tyson and the development group. We're excited to be here this afternoon and just really want to thank city staff, Planning Department, the NRD Watershed Management. They've met with us multiple times, Zoom calls, onsite meetings, just to make sure that everything that's presented here today can go through hopefully smoothly. So as George mentioned, this project is located between 66th and 70th Street. Here's kind of a nice little rendering, so that comes up. 66th Street here on the west, 70th over on the east, just north of Dead Man's Run, adjacent to MOPAC Trail. We've got the 32 residential lots, row homes, three commercial lots on the former Finkie property. We've already got a building permit for the future Clock Tower Animal Clinic on, right here, Lot 34. Lot 35 is currently being used, and we're looking at the potential for some things on Lot 33. And we believe this is a very unique project with the row homes, that integrates both having Dead Man's Run to the south as well as using the trail as an amenity. So you have open area for residents, you have the, the trail to the north as an amenity as well. And that was noted in the Urban Design Committee review, as they really thought this was a unique project, liked those amenities, and had significant input and discussion from both those past Urban Design 5.0. The Pedestrian Bike Advisory said that they are very supportive of this plan and that they appreciated the attention to our interfacing with the trail on this project. There were some letters that came in late yesterday and this morning on some opposition, and it's kind of the typical, you're reducing landscaping, concerns with flooding and stuff like that. One talking about adding population without inadequate ability to service them. We've got utilities all around the site. In fact, working with the wastewater department, they are strongly in favor of this project because where our proposed sanitary is on the south of the MOPAC Trail, we're talk, we've been talking to them about a joint project which would remove and abandon this eight-inch clay tile from back in the 60s or 70s that is actually in the residential lots and move it within that 20-foot easement that George had mentioned for the trail. And so that would help them for maintenance, and it would be a win for us as well. And so we've been working with LTU and the utilities to make sure that this project not only makes sense for the design team and the developer, but also from the C as well. We've got some renderings here too of kind of what things would look like from the trail. This is the backside along the MOPAC Trail and then along the private roadway, some of the renderings there as well. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
So the existing neighbors from this view, the existing neighbors are on the backside of that?
Correct.
So what does the backside of that look like?
The backside is this view, so that would be looking from the north to the south.
And then that's the trail?
Correct. The trail's right here.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions for Nate?
And you talked about only the waiver for the veterinarian clinic animals was from three to four?
There was some confusion.
Let's talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so, so lots 34, 35, and 33. So currently, the vet clinic is on 34. This is being used for pet services, Lot 35. And so it was our understanding going from the three to 10 was for all three lots, and so there's the potential that this could kind of be a pet services campus with the clinic, maybe some dog training. And so we had thought that the three for, to 10 was for all three lots. And so after further discussion, when the planning staff report came out last week, talking to George and Steve, we came to realize that we could have the three separate, and so that's why we just requested to go from three to four.
Okay. Now, wait, sorry.
Go ahead.
And that waiver is just for the one lot, right? So it's the, the one in the, I can't remember, the one in yellow? That's the one you want to go from three to four on, and the other two would remain at three?
No, we're requesting those two to be from three to four as well.
As well. Thank you for the clarification.
I will repeat the question that I asked staff earlier in terms of the conditions relating to the stormwater, and it sounds like there's been some back and forth there. Can you give us a status update as to where, where that conversation is?
Sure. We have not specifically talked to Watershed, but I know there were some concerns regarding the proximity of the water quality, so we are requesting a waiver for stormwater detention, which is very typical next to the floodway. We don't want to store it, and then as the water downstream's coming in, then we inundate the stream. And so we've requested a waiver for detention. However, we're providing water quality onsite. And so this detention pond here would be strictly for water quality. There was some comments within the staff report about the proximity to the easement, and so what we've talked with Tyson about is pushing this further away from the, the bank and also potentially using Outlaw A for some water quality treatment as well. We have not specifically mentioned that to Watershed Management, but that is what we've discussed internally.
Got it. Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Other questions for Nate? All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll take any testimony in support of this application. Is there any testimony in support? Is there any neutral testimony or testimony in opposition? Okay, any, any additional questions for staff?
I do have one.
George?
And it might be more of an LTU, I'm not entirely sure. I know that there's some projects going on with Dead Man's Run that was through like the NRD, and it's kind of a combination. How does that affect this project?
I'll defer that question to LTU Watershed.
Tim Zock, LTU Watershed Management, 555 South 10th Street. So you're asking about the flood control project?
Yes.
So the project footprint goes up to 48th Street, and the benefits in flood reduction are within that area of 48th. They don't extend much farther up from there.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
While you're, while you're up there, just real quick, they were talking about how they were going to take care of water quality?
Yeah.
What did you think about that discussion?
Um, we want them to look at where they're locating that basin because we don't want a pond that are close to the bank and causing that bank to fail. You know, that's a concern with the NRD as well. They had another project within this area where they had an issue with saturation of the bank, and it actually did fail, and I think the NRD is in litigation over that issue. So that's one concern with the location of that cell. Then the other concern is just providing justification that detention should be waived. This is higher up in the watershed, and so we don't want to just blanket waive it. We want some supporting evidence to make that determination.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Applicant rebuttal? Anything else you want to add at this point?
Yeah, so again, for the stormwater stuff, we're looking into that. We're looking at reducing the depth within the pond adjacent to Dead Man's Run, pushing some up to the northeast. And I guess I would just close that, you know, this, this plan I think is very unique. I think that's what we're looking for in the city. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan, which encourages mixed-use, commercial, and residential infill. And so those are my closing statements.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nate. At this point, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Still move. Kristi, Joy?
Second.
Core?
Shelley?
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
Move approval of change of zone 22038. Core?
Second, Edens.
Discussion.
You want me to go first? I used to ride this path of the, of the bike path many years ago, but I think it'll be good to have some eyes on the path. Sometimes we have some less than desirable activities that happen there, so this, it's always good to have more eyes on it, and that might prevent some, some of that activity. I know that further up the trail, probably more, whoo, more towards the center of town, that the houses do get a little bit closer to the trail. And I know that this will be a big change for this area, but I think it's a positive change and that it'll be well-received.
I second that again. We, you know, I'm, I'm center core area, and we ran houses along the north side of the trail on the backside of Peter Pan Park, and it actually cleaned up that area, made it look a lot nicer compared to the industrial buildings that were just north of that. And I feel this is going to be the same, that those houses are going to buffer before the industrial buildings hit. The East Park Plaza, I don't know if it has a new name now, I might be dating myself. But so yeah, I do think it is a good project. I do hope they work out the watershed issue. Building in a floodplain is not my go-to. That makes me a little nervous, so I hope you guys work hard with watershed and do something right so that these people aren't buying new houses that are in danger.
I will support this change of zone. I think mixed-use infill development is exciting. This is a very unique project. A lot of time and energy has gone into making it look, look like it belongs in this area, that it will provide additional opportunities in the middle of the city, and excited to see it move forward.
Shelley?
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero. We now will move to continue public hearing for item 5.1A Change of Zone 22035 from B1 Local Business District to R1 Residential District and B2 Planned Neighborhood Business District and from R1 Residential District to B2 Planned Neighborhood Business District on property generally located at 2201 Old Cheney Road. Associated with item 5.1B Use Permit 22013 to allow for a use permit with an associated change of zone to B2 Planned Neighborhood Business District and allow up to 75,000 square feet of commercial floor area, also on property generally located at 2201 Old Cheney Road. The Planning Commission action is final on this item. Next item is associated item 5.1C Special Permit 22038 to allow for a CUP Community Unit Plan for up to 36 dwelling units with associated waivers to the maximum block length and setback requirements, also on property generally located at 2201 Old Cheney Road. The planning action is final on this item as well. Are there, is there, are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these applications?
I did receive an email from somebody wanting to talk to me and meet with me about this project, but I just, I didn't answer them, in full disclosure.
I also received an email from someone wanting to discuss and just pointed them in the I also received an email um from someone wanting to discuss and um just pointed them in the direction of this meeting and said, please feel free to come.
Uh, I had similar uh but a conversa- two conversations and asked them to submit materials to the city if they had things to talk about, and they did.
I I also received the email.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No.
All right. Ben?
Good afternoon. Ben Callahan with the Planning Department, five-five-five South Tenth Street, six-eight-five-zero-eight. And if it's okay, I'll go ahead and introduce all three items in one presentation, and then each would be a separate action.
Absolutely.
So this is a request for a change of zone, and within the change of zone area would be a special permit and a use permit associated with that. Um, a little bit on the location. So this is the Old Knolls Country Club area along Old Chaney Road. Um, the major streets to the west would be South Fourteenth Street, and to the east would be South Twenty-seventh. If we're familiar with the Knolls, so the western portion was developed as the Knolls Senior Center that was approved back in two thousand and fifteen and rezoned. And this request would be the remaining area of the golf course. In the nineteen-fifties, this was approved, starting out as a public park, and then in the mid-sixties was approved for a private country club and operated there for forty years before it was closed and has been remaining as green space. Excuse me. Um, the total rezoning request, so right now, this whole area is zoned R-one with B-one, which is where the existing country club and restaurant operated. Today, they're requesting point-eight acres would be rezoned into R-one. Uh, so this would all be R-one residential, and then a little over six acres to B-two, which would be associated with the use permit I'll talk about. I'm sorry. Um, around the area to the north, the east, and the south is all R-one residential today. And then the Knolls Senior Center at R-two residential. So this is a map showing the existing, or the proposed, uh, special permit area that would allow for the community unit plan. So it'd sit just south of where the use permit will be proposed and would all be R-one residential. They are proposing up to thirty-six dwelling units within the C U P. Um, this, I do want to note, would be less than the density allowed if they were to follow the design standards for R-one. Um, so it's roughly thirteen acres, which would allow up to fifty-one units. Uh, so they are proposing thirty-six single-family lots with one access off of Norman Road. Two of the four waivers I want to mention would be they are requesting a reduction in the side yard setback. Currently, R-one requires a ten-foot side yard setback. They're requesting seven and a half. And it's important to note, on the four lots that will be abutting, the east side of the C U P will not have that reduced setback. So they still would be meeting the ten feet, um, abutting the existing residential. They're also requesting a reduction in the front yard setback from thirty to twenty feet. Currently, R-one is thirty. Um, one aspect to point out on that would be it would allow the homes to be closer to the new streets and pull them further away from the existing residential. So these homes would abut the new street and then would allow for an extra ten feet in the rear yard. Um, overall, they're not requesting any reduction in the lot size. R-one is our biggest residential lot requirement of nine thousand square feet. All thirty-six lots are shown nine thousand or above. Outside of that, they're proposing five different outlots, um, with the majority of them being used as buffers. So along Norman Road, um, also a buffer on the south side here from this existing property, and then two at the end of the cul-de-sacs as additional landscape and distance buffering. For the north side of the site, this would be the proposed use permit. Um, they're proposing to allow uh go to B-two with those change of zone and the use permit allowing up to seventy-five thousand square feet of limited uses. So they are showing one access off of Norman Road, and I'll talk a little bit on the traffic questions with this development. And that was with the site access. Um, if they go through with building this entrance, they would be required to add a right turn lane. If this entrance is not desired and they only use this entrance from Norman, they will be required to build a right turn lane off of Old Chaney. Within the site itself, it'd be following the B-two commercial uses, and the development did propose limited uses. So there are, I believe, eight uses that would be prohibited onsite, which were felt to be more auto-oriented. So things like multifamily hotels, convenience stores, um, drive-through restaurants would all be prohibited. And that was just in respect to the surrounding neighborhood, trying to limit traffic and noise from those um more auto-oriented use. Lastly, they are providing a fifty-foot rear yard requirement for B-two, so this would be shown as an outlot. That will serve as detention for both the C U P and the use permit within this area. B-two requires a twenty-foot side yard setback when abutting residential, and they are proposing a fifty-foot side yard setback on the east side. A little bit on all three regarding the comprehensive plan. This area is shown as future urban residential, and there is an area with the current B-one that is shown as commercial. Um, I want to note that it it is still in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Urban residential allows up to fifteen dwelling units per acre, so it's still below what that anticipates. And then with commercial, um, we would not need to do a comprehensive plan amendment as this would still be less than five acres for the proposed B-two, um, leaving out the outlots. Um, overall, with the B-one and the R-one, today it could still develop following B-one and R-one requirements through a preliminary plat- process. Um, so the main reason for the C U P was for the additional waivers, and then currently with the use permit, that's required with B-two. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ben. Could you give us an example of if that was left B-one, that little section there, what could go in there right now?
Yes, that would follow um B-one uses. Actually, I believe all eight uses they're prohibiting within the use permit would be allowed in B-one today. So it could be convenience store, um, auto repair. Some of them are by conditional use. They have to meet certain distance requirements, um, but things like veterinary services, um, multifamily.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I have another question, too. Sorry. Will they be required to put sidewalks along Norman Road?
It'd be required, um, believe down to the development, not within the existing neighborhood for Norman Road.
So, because I know a lot of the the letters that were sent in talked about there's no sidewalks along there now. Um, so in the portion that's being newly developed, they would put in sidewalks there?
Yes.
But no one else? I mean, the existing people wouldn't have to put in sidewalks?
Correct. The existing neighborhood does not have sidewalks along Norman.
Thank you.
And uh on the um, I know that we, I feel like we looked at a traffic study when we looked at the senior housing. How does this, I know that this will change some of that. So tell us about what you discovered with that, please?
Yes, and we did, they did a traffic study for the use permit for the commercial. Um, that was one thing with the turn lane being required. So either um with the entrance off Old Chaney, or if the entrance is just off of Norman only, either one would require the right turn lane. Um, so that was part of the traffic study. And then we do have L T U here today as well, and they could speak on any other traffic requirements from the conditions.
Okay, great. And then when, I know that as we started to look at that development back, I think in eight, didn't we talk in eighteen or something? Anyway, um, we, when you go from south to north, that drops from approximately like thirty-some feet there. So what, tell, talk to us a little bit more about what you're doing from a water controller and all of those types of things.
Yeah, so this area sits lower than the surrounding residential, um, so much of that would drain into this area. And that was part of the use permit plan, so that will be serving as the detention area. And um watershed has reviewed that. I know there were some additional concerns with showing a larger boundary that they'd be able to speak on that. Uh, but the C U P would also be served by that detention area within the use permit.
Okay, so we're looking at the entire area that's draining down, oops, sorry, into that area? Is that what you said L T U is looking at?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so Ben, you mentioned that a a um amendment to the comprehensive plan is not needed because it's less than five acres. Is that correct?
Yeah, generally, when we would do an amendment to the comp plan would be when the commercial area is five acres or more.
Okay.
Um, with this, the existing B-one area is roughly two acres in size. The total boundary of the use permit would be a little over six, um, but
So that's more than five?
Um, but the, with the outlots and the setbacks, so these will, this would all be an outlot, and the east side would not be buildable for commercial.
Okay.
So the actual buildable area for commercial is still less than five acres.
Okay, and so, and that standard is that you would you would exclude outlets and detention areas when you're when you're determining that um the size and whether a um amendment would be required?
Correct.
Okay. And there are other examples in the in the city where those outlets, that that has been excluded in determining this, the actual size of the buildable area?
I might resort to Steve on the history for that.
Okay.
Uh, Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, five-five-five South Tenth Street. There is actually two parts to this. Uh, the first part is that there is already two acres of commercial. So you could simply look at it, it's going from two acres to six acres. The addition is four acres, and the four acres is less than the five. Typically, you don't have an area where there's already a little bit of commercial and they're adding on to it. Typically, uh, for instance, Wilderness Creek that was before you, um, was an area, sorry, at First and Pioneers, uh, was an air wilderness crossing, too many wildernesses. Uh, that was one where it was brand-new. There was nothing previously shown as commercial. And uh, that one actually did have a comprehensive plan amendment, but you've had numerous P U Ds where there's a small area of commercial, and they have been a mix. Sometimes there's a big detention pond that is serving the whole area. Um, sometimes those commercial areas are not designated B-two. There are three P U D, but they're shown for commercial. And so you're you're trying to look at the commercial use that is left. So I I wouldn't say this is common, that you have a change of zone B-two where it's partly B-one already today, and there's also an outlot of detention in the area. But I think it was, when we were looking at it as a whole, it was clearly adding less than five acres. Um, and this is also, the comprehensive plan does that because it's trying to encourage having neighborhood convenience, commercial scattered throughout the community, not all and just major centers.
Right. Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarification. I am, I'm also concerned about the um, the expansion of the commercial area so that it abuts current R-one, um, where folks were, um, you know, folks in that R-one area currently, existing neighbors are expected that that was R-one, and now that land will be B-two. Um, can you speak to that a little bit, please?
Yeah, reviewing that, um, I guess the one aspect from the B-two is that they would have the setback. I know there's been some discussion between the neighborhood and the developer that they could speak on with any setbacks from the building. Um, but the zoning code does require the twenty-foot setback, and they're providing fifty. Currently, when it was the golf course, um, so this home here being R-one, both of them, um, there was the lot here that served as the maintenance building, and I believe that was up to, the current structure there was up to five feet from their property line. Um, so that was one example, and that they'd be increasing the setback from any structure to their rear yard.
Sure, a a maintenance shed in a forty-thousand-square-foot building seems like slightly different issues, but I I I see your point. Um, the um, the only other question I had was um about the, there was some questions that we received about there being current covenants that might be um of concern, and and I'm not, I'm speaking a little out of turn. I'm not quite sure I understood completely what was being presented or that information, but can you speak to that at all, Ben?
A little bit on the side of, I believe it's covenant covenants on the, on two existing lots.
Okay.
I will say that for the city, the Planning Department wouldn't be involved in covenants, and that'd be through the neighborhood.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you. That's what I was thinking. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. Um, there was also a lot of concern about um the fast track of this project. Can you give me an idea of how long they've, the applicant has been talking to you about this project?
Um, so this specific project, I would say, like, three months ago, would start talking to the Planning Department. Generally, that's how it's very common, in that they let you know they're getting ready to submit, um, whether they have a one, a meeting. But once they've submitted, and then they did delay the public hearing from two weeks ago.
Thank you for sharing.
I have one question um regarding traffic studies. Several of the letters that were submitted um mentioned that they believed that the traffic would significantly increase, and in particular, where we're talking about schoolchildren and also with um the elderly living facility. How, what do we know in terms of the traffic studies that it, that have been conducted and how um traffic would be impacted in this area?
That one, I might refer to L T U, just so they can answer from the numbers.
Bob, simmering it out to you. Uh, we did get a traffic study from the developer, and it indicates, I think it was, uh, three thousand two hundred and three vehicles per day, and AM Peak two-fifty-one, I, uh, so those are the numbers that we have. We do, when we get these traffic studies, review them to see if the uh content is accurately described and what's actually happening. And we do believe that this is an accurate traffic study. With that, the traffic study did indicate that there does need to be some provision for a right turn going into this because of the uh movement on Old Chaney. So we agree that if it's not at Norman, or I believe it's Norman, that it would have to be at the access point, but there does need to be a right turn lane going into that commercial somewhere. And the developer might uh be able to give you a lot more information on specific.
Can you give me an idea of like what kind of an increase that is, like, from present conditions to what they're proposing? Like, is that five more trips a day? Is that twenty more trips a day? You might not know that off the top of your head.
I think you might be better to ask the traffic engineer to do the study of those questions. He will ha- hopefully has that with him.
And as we looked at Hill Elementary with their capacity and the, how those come out and connect, how do you, how do, how does that travel path go with that elementary? Because how how long's that been there with, at the capacity of five-eighty?
Let them answer that.
Let them answer that also. Perfect. Good idea.
Yeah, I I'm good at that.
Great. That's perfect. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Other questions? Any other questions for staff at this point? Testimony from the applicant.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission members. Uh, Andrew Willis, two-thirty-three South Thirteenth Street in Lincoln, on behalf of the applicant, South Hills LLC. Um, so we've got a good overview of the project. Former Knolls Golf Course, consists of about nineteen acres and kind of all, I know we have three applications, so similarly, I'll try to hit on the points of all three of these. Uh, but so, you know, nineteen acres total, um, and and the developer here has, came up with a really nice plan for the development of this area. Thirty-six higher-end villa-style Thirty-six higher-end villa-style homes, single-family detached homes, and then approximately, it'll be a six-acre use permit, but about five acres of commercial, about 75, up to 75,000 square feet of commercial. As you saw on the zoning map, the site is currently zoned primarily R1 with approximately 2.25 acres of B1 that's located on Norman Road. The proposed change of zone moves that commercial off of Norman, really shifts it to focus on, you know, the frontage of Old Chaney. The residential remains R1, and the CUP will implement the residential portion of that project. You know, looking, we'll start with the CUP piece of this. The proposed R1 Community Unit Plan and the change of zone, that's about 13, a little over 13 acres. And again, looking at 36 lots, 36 single-family villa-style homes. This is going to be smaller, you know, smaller community comparison to the lots adjacent, but it really, these are going to be higher-end villa lots. It's kind of, you can look at this as similar in quality and value, but as a lower, a smaller footprint, less maintenance lots, possibly downsizing to have, still have a nice larger house, but have less yard. And again, that's kind of part of the reasoning on the smaller lots, and when we talk about the internal setback waiver, really, it's a product that there's a need for and a desire for. But we still think this is cohesive in the overall quality, value of the neighborhood perspective. I want to really emphasize that, you know, the proposed CUP is not an attempt to maximize the density, make drastic changes that could be done under the existing zoning. The property is currently zoned R1, and as was already stated, they could put 51 dwelling units on this property with a preliminary plat, not coming and asking, you know, not coming with this proposed CUP. You know, could be duplexes are permitted in R1, there's a lot of things that can be done in R1 by right. Developers proposing to limit this to 36 single-family detached dwelling units, high-end units, giving us a lower residential density, less intensive uses that could be done by right. You know, it's a pretty deliberate effort to minimize the impact on the neighborhood and provide something that is cohesive and fits in well with the neighborhood. Again, as already mentioned, these are going to have some deeper lots, and one of the waivers that we're requesting, that 10-foot front yard setback allows those homes to be moved 10 feet closer to those internal streets. With that, that creates 10 more feet of buffer between that and the neighbor's house. Again, the idea here is trying to do what can be done to make this fit as well as possible in the neighborhood. As far as setbacks go, one of the concerns that I know has been mentioned is the side yard setbacks. The waiver being requested is to reduce those internal side yard setbacks from seven point, from 10 feet to seven and a half, so you still have 15 feet of distance between, again, to make those smaller lots, less maintenance on the lots. But along the east side where those lots would back up to the existing homes, we're not requesting that, that would still remain at that 10-foot setback. Again, I understand it's 10 feet, but that's what is the R1 requirement, what could be done today. So the waiver request is only for the internal lots and you'd still retain the 10 feet along the existing homes. In addition to that, there's going to be, where those cul-de-sacs are, there'll be 25-foot setback buffers, landscaped berm, to make sure, to minimize the, you know, any interference with those existing neighbors. So again, the overall plan here really is to work within the existing community. Again, the primary reason for the CUP, rather than simply going with a preliminary plat and just coming, is to allow these waivers and allow this use that fits in better with the neighborhood. And we really think these are all done with the intent of making it fit in better and make it more compatible with the neighborhood. So again, I mentioned, out of the waivers, I mentioned that we'd reduce the front yard setback from 30 feet to 20 feet, again, pushing those homes 10 feet closer to the internal streets, reducing the side yard setbacks from 10 feet to seven and a half feet, again, allowing a larger villa-style home, but it's reducing that yard, reducing the maintenance there, and not, that waiver would not be along the east side of those existing homes. The other waivers, allowing side lot lines that are not at right angles, and that's just typical cul-de-sacs, we think that creates a better layout, and that would be what's typically waived along cul-de-sacs. And then waiving pedestrian way for a block that exceeds 1,000 feet in length. And again, part of this is the grade, it's a pretty steep grade along the edge there. There's a pedestrian easement that exists between a couple of the homes on Knowles Street. It doesn't really work, you know, by the time you've got that slope and that grade, it wouldn't be ADA compliant anyway. What's being proposed is that the pedestrian connection would occur, I can pull this up. Rather than trying to, you know, have some connection to the Knowles, there'd be a pedestrian connection between a couple of these lots. And again, trying to maintain that pedestrian connectivity, but pull that further away from the existing homes, again, just trying to, just trying to lessen interference with the existing homes. So, and again, that's one of the waivers that's being requested. Come back to that further, but then start far as in the B2 use permit area. So again, we have the current B1 zoning, about 2.25 acres along Norman Road. Yes, this does increase the overall size of it, approximately five feet of commercial, but what it does is, I think it does really two key things. It brings primarily most of the traffic coming from Old Chaney on this new access, again, new access point that will be built with a right turn lane. So most of your commercial is going to be coming from Old Chaney, not from Norman, so you're pulling what would exist on the B2 over here to the access there. And while it's larger in size, it is limited in intensity of uses. So B1 right now by right, you could come in, put your gas station or your drive-through restaurant, you could do a lot of things. The B2 use permit would prohibit those uses. It would prohibit multifamily hotels, motels, gas stations, vehicle repair services, car wash, restaurants with drive-through facilities, kennels, veterinary facilities, again, trying to remove what would be heavy traffic-intensive uses, so that there is this, while this commercial component, again, we feel like it's going to be complementary to the neighborhood, we are making sure that it is less intensive from a vehicle standpoint. So we're taking what, even though smaller an area, by right, could be more intense and creating a less intense commercial use, and also pulling that towards Old Chaney. Again, we feel like these are more beneficial in the overall effect on the neighborhood. Again, the 50-foot landscape setback was mentioned, obviously you have detention, your detention is in this outlot in between, and that serves both the commercial and the residential. And then over here, this 50-foot setback, again, increasing from 20 feet to 50 feet, trying to make sure this is, you know, that there is, you know, an understanding that the neighbors aren't happy there, but there is, I mean, there is, there's, you know, some efforts being made to think, you know, to make this work. You know, 50-foot setback, this, you know, one of the things that was mentioned was, you know, on the Dial property when that was done, well, hey, they increased the setback further. Part of that was, you know, when they changed the zone to R2, they asked for a waiver to increase the height that was allowed. There's, and obviously, if you increase the height on part of that, it makes more sense to create a larger setback. We're not asking for an increase in the height, I mean, it would be an increase in the height because it's going from R1 to B2, but we're not asking for any changes in what's, you know, in B2. So we are, you know, that B2 standard setback next to residential already exists in the zoning regulation, and we're looking at making that even bigger already. So we're already kind of trying to create a better buffer, that'll be landscaped, that'll, you know, it really should be a good buffer to that adjacent property. Brad Marshall will come talk some more of the details on this project, but before, I wanted to just highlight a couple, two more things before I sit down, then I can either answer questions then or afterwards. But as stated already by planning and the staff reports, this proposed plan overall is in conformance with the comp plan. It's, you know, designated as future urban residential, this is less intense density from the residential, and that future urban residential does allow for that, you know, the complete neighborhoods and that commercial aspect to it. Not to mention that we already have commercial, and again, as I would say, we're taking a smaller but more intense permitted commercial use and creating, you know, less intensive uses in a better access location. So it does conform to the comprehensive plan. It does fit into what we're trying to do with complete neighborhoods and make this work. And while the housing sizes are different, the lots are different, it's all meets the R1 requirements, which is existing. And again, part of the idea of neighborhoods is that, you know, those different styles of housing, that different, those different, you know, availability of different types. So again, this is in conformance with the comp plan. The second point, I just want to make sure, we talked about, you know, because I know you're, we're kind of have a lot of opposition, unfortunately, we can't, we didn't, you know, we don't have a unified, you know, everything in agreement with the neighbors, but we had initially submitted these applications, plan to be in front of Planning Commission two weeks ago, December 7th, had a neighborhood meeting November 28th, a lot of neighbors were there, obviously, you know, that we had a lot of input. And based on that, and their, you know, opposition, we pushed this, we deferred the meeting two weeks to try to work with them. There was conversations started with, you know, at that meeting, kind of the person identified as the liaison for the neighbors, we tried to, we had a couple of different discussions. Somewhere in there, about December 6th, had sent us an email, some proposed changes, some proposed ideas to address some of their concerns, you know, it's, we were never going to get to not doing anything, or the lots being large, one-acre lots or anything, you know, large, you know, there were some points where we didn't obviously get to where they wanted to be. But there were some concessions, I think, were made, didn't really get a response back. Later, they got their attorneys involved, and we had several conversations with them. Again, it wasn't, there was, I guess, not a great back and forth, but we were trying, we really were trying to keep this line of communication open. You know, last Friday, they, through their attorney, they'd sent us some proposals for, or some ideas they wanted to see. Some of them, I mean, played into the land use, some of it more on the private covenant side, and what could be done from design and what we are still looking at as far as covenants that wouldn't be before this board anyway. But, so we met Friday afternoon, tried to answer those, got an email back out, and then Monday, you know, the answer was sort of, well, we're concerned about Watershed and some other things, we don't really need to look at those. So we certainly didn't address their concerns, or we didn't come to an agreement, but I do think that we have really put an effort in to try to work with them and at least do that. And it just, unfortunately, sometimes it doesn't work out. The private covenants that were mentioned, as far as the restrictive covenants on those two existing lots, we're aware of that, we're working through that piece of it. It's not really a land use, you know, city zoning or Planning Commission issue, but yes, that is a piece we're working through separately, on a different issue. So, you know, with that, it's unfortunate, we don't have support of the neighboring owner, the property owners, but we really do, I really do believe this is a good use of the property, it's less intense than could be done in the current zoning, and the changes that we're asking those waivers, the reason we're coming with the CUP really is for the benefit of the overall neighborhood and area, rather than, I guess, detracting from it. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions or let Brad talk a little.
How about we have Brad go ahead, and then we'll answer questions or ask questions.
He'll probably answer your questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Marshall with Olson, 601 P Street, Suite 200. And I was just going to say that, I'm going to repeat a couple of things that Andrew said, and try to explain a couple of these other things, and then we can, of course, take questions. So I'm going to start in the CUP area relatively, but.
Get me into the microphone again.
Is my mic on? There we go, okay.
Ah, better.
There we go, all right. It says, "Don't move." So this process did start many, several months ago. Knowing that this property is unique, it's going to be infill, there's surrounding neighborhoods, we wanted to take our time to make sure that we put together a comprehensive plan, so that when it did come out and we were in front of neighbors and so forth, that it is, got a lot of detail to it. So misconceptions can happen sometimes, that this thing is already baked and cooked, and that this is already predetermined as to what it is. These information meetings that we have had with the neighbors have been very helpful, and we took a lot of care. So we started this process, and so South Hills LLC, I should start on behalf of them, Georgian Janice Bisalas are the owners and the applicants, obviously as part of this process, obviously operated and maintained the Knowles Golf Course for many, many, many years. And Olson was part of the process with the Dial Center on the west side seven years ago, and then subsequently, the golf course had closed, and it's been closed since then. So the golf course has not been in operation since then. So when we started working from the planning perspective, we were, we took a very considerable time and effort to look at what would be appropriate uses for here. I can sit here in my seat and say, I've looked at this property dozen times, my associates have looked at it, our competitors have looked at it many, many times. Planning Department has seen several proposals on the property itself. And talking with Georgian Janice on this, they have a great considerable care of what this property is, and that's why they are moving forward with entitlement on this property at this time, because they have a connection to this property. They want this to be a legacy for the Knowles and themselves. And so as we talked about, the planning aspect of the project and the residential, character of the neighborhood will be mentioned a lot today. And the character of the project was taken consideration. High-value homes, we know a lot of the homes around there are large, lots of considerable value, and we looked at what would be a really great component. Villas, villas are, I use that word, it's a single-family residence, so just one home, one unit on a single lot. The intent of a villa lot is that it is a larger home on a lot, and so that there's less yard, there's less maintenance, there's more landscaping, you know, more amenities surrounding the house. The house, in this instance, we're looking at luxury style. And so you're looking at, the target market for these particular are going to be retirees and empty nesters, people looking to downsize on these homes. And have a, be able to move out of these larger homes that they are possibly in, and move to a smaller, more manageable, but maintain a high level of luxury for those homes. We are targeting, from the value of these homes, to be somewhere in the magnitude of 750 and upwards to a million plus. And that means these homes are going to be 2,500 to 3,500, depending on how these, how, you know, individuals will want to build these out. They'll all be custom, and have, by covenant standard, not part of the standards that are before you, but covenants will be fairly restrictive as to the materials and the look and type of feel of the development. When we, when I first met Georgian Janice for the planning aspect of this, there was a discussion of what transpired seven years ago for the Dial Center, and there was a lot of discussion about what would happen to the east side. And several discussions pertaining to what it would look like or what would be desirable, particularly Bishop Square was mentioned. Bishop Square is a R1 town home, I'd kind of call it more of a downsizing retirement community down 27, up of 27th Street. And so you look at that, and I think that seed was planted years ago, is what would be forward to you today. We're going to talk about density a little bit, I'll give you a couple of numbers. The intent of this, and let me be clear on this, is these homes are not going to be 5,000, 6,000 square feet, the acreage of these lots are not intended to be an acre or larger, or fit exactly what the surrounding homes are. The intent is to provide a new market, a new component to the Knowles neighborhood, and maintain a high value of living that is around there. These are seen in other communities. Firethorn has a couple of these little pockets of townhome communities. Eagle Run, which I actually brought forward years ago as part of the golf course in the west nine up there, excuse me, was redeveloping into townhomes and larger, or I should say townhome type of living, more higher-end, of course, in the Firethorn area. That ended up being about 3.7 dwellings per acre. up being about 3.7 dwellings per acre. The Fairways, which is on the south side, off of Pioneer's on the south side, surrounded by the golf course still, about 2.7 acres, or dwellings per acre. The Ridge, Lone Tree, which is another townhome, and I'm gonna mention townhome, because there aren't a whole lot of villa or patio home type of communities out there that are really specific, that you, that are, that are really marketed towards that, there's not like 40 villa-type townhome communities out in Lincoln right now. Wilderness Ridge is another one at, at just over 3.6, and I mentioned 3.6, 3.7, what's before you today is 2.7 dwellings per acre. That is, that is approximately 70% of what the allowable density is for the R1, and as Bennett mentioned, it's the larger, you know, it's the category of the largest type of So, let's see here, these are, again, just to kind of give a great, really good picture of what the, the villas are supposed to be, look like, they're, they're gonna be a private area, there's not a whole lot tech, tech connectivity to the existing Knowles, to the, to the east or south, so it's gonna be a private kind of community, low maintenance is the intent, a lot of these are one level, as you kind of look at these, and a lot of examples that we utilized as a part of our presentations to neighbors and so forth. It, it just provides a downsizing, where families can still come and visit and so forth, for people that live there. So I mentioned the price point, and, and we talked about what the surrounding neighborhood and the character, again, we did a, I did a quick analysis of the surrounding neighborhood, just of the properties around it. Again, very nice homes, upward of, of somewhere around $600,000 by the assessed value, so you can see that we're adding value to the, the target that we're presenting here, to the type of villa and the valuation that we're projecting. There was some conversation about the drainage, we're working with Watershed, I know Watershed is here, and the areas, there was a particular question about an area not being analyzed in the, the drainage study, and that is particularly on the Knowles Road. What has been described is, there is limited infrastructure on the Knowles, and flat roads, and there's an indication that those, those streets are actually being overwhelmed in very large storms. So, I've talked to Tim Zock, we will continue to look at that with Watershed, that's not an easy thing, it doesn't say that this area goes through the Knowles, it's, it's really not designed to be conveyed that direction, but, you know, there are instances, and we'll take into consideration the accounts of, and the testimony of the individuals that have written in on that, to make sure that we account for it. We don't want any problems, obviously, and, and if you, if you've seen this property, it sits low, it's, it's a, it's kind of a goalie, if you will, the kind of middle of the property is lower, this project is, is presented in the plans, it'll be graded more flat, and so, it will kind of be this bowl, it will be flat in the middle, and then it will sit lower than the surrounding properties around it. And that's, that's by design, and so, these homes will sit lower than, than the surrounding properties, drainage will all come through the development, we don't want any issues, there are a couple areas that we actually pick up offsite drainage, and convey that through the entire property, and take that, no, just no deviations or requests for exceptions to, to detention or quality, we're gonna take care of all of that. A couple of little things that probably matter, but, I'm not sure we've mentioned, but, right now, there are all overhead power lines around the community, around the perimeter, those will, I've talked to LES, we're gonna bury all of those, clean all of that up, I know one opposition letter had said that would be nice, from perspective of being able to do some more landscaping, because the power lines and trees don't really mix, so, that will be really one thing that we take care of, as part of the, the development. The type of homes that we're talking about on the villas, it's pretty, I'm gonna say custom areas, we're looking at types of homes that actually have, and in the covenants, we'll control this, but will be like side-load entry garages, and so, in other instances, we've actually pushed those homes all the way, pretty close to the sidewalks in instances, 10-foot front yards. We do think it is important to maintain some level of, of landscaping and green space between the sidewalk and the house. These side-loads will allow that to, to come forward a little bit more than what the R1 that we have a waiver for, from 30 to 20 feet. That does allow us to get a little bit further away, and increase that home to be shifted towards the street and away from the perimeter homes and their backyards. I was mentioning, this isn't, this is just an advantage, I think, that, but, you know, a lot of the homes on these larger lots, relatively are, and it varies, you know, 50 feet to 100 feet away from the property line, so there are some good green spaces that will be provided. The other one I want to make sure that we talk about, and it's, this is the internal setback, again, it's just in, it's trying to, it's trying not to put all of the villa walls right next to each other, provide some green space, but still maximize, try to maximize that lot with more home than, than yard, and, and, for instance, a villa lot may cover about 50% of a lot, the homes, like I said, are much bigger. On the surrounding homes, for, for instance, they may be only 25%, so they're, again, there's, there's a direct intent to be different on the type of, the style of the lots that This will have an HOA, it will have a governing body, and of this, an association to enforce the covenants that we're putting together, so, just make that point. And then, I'll move on to the use permit, in the commercial area. First thing that I could probably say about all this is, we have to come up with a site plan, and we almost always change that site plan. So, I know there's been a lot of focus on the building to the east, that's shown as 40,000, two-story. It does allow that building to be located at that location, that was somewhat of intentional, let's talk about it, let's, let's get it out there, let's show the larger buffer space, let's show connectivity through that area, we talked about the park space, and the, the walkability of the Dial Center, we're trying to incorporate that, all the side, all the CUP area, all the town, the villa area will have sidewalks, there will be connectivity through outlots, and we intend for that to be taken through a lot of the outlots that are provided in the commercial area, so that there's connectivity between the residential and the commercial, and the commercial to Old Chaney and, and Norman Road. The 50-foot buffer is intended to be bermed and landscaped, as part of the screening, we're gonna treat the east side just as the same as we're treating internally, commercial to residential to the south, it's gonna be bermed, and provided with trees and so forth. I'm working with an owner here that has a great care of what landscaping is from the golf course, and will try to project that into the project, and so that there's that component of the Knowles, as, as it will be in this residential area. Traffic, as we started looking at this, there were two options, there was one option to add a drive on the Norman Road, and probably have some improvements at Norman and Old Chaney, or bring a new driveway into the commercial center. I elected to bring the commercial, the driveway into the commercial center, and the reason for that being is, we heard a lot of discussion about the traffic on Norman, and, to me, if we are allowing a new access, access management allows us on a minor arterial, at 660-foot spacing, at that eighth mile, you can put one right in the middle of the commercial center. So that's where it is, on the plan, it's, we're pretty much bound by that location, can't shift closer to Norman, we really can't shift closer to the Knowles Road, so that's primarily where it's gonna be located. And if we're gonna have commercial, move from Norman, which we heard, again, don't have, don't increase the traffic on Norman, and shift it up to Old Chaney and Arturo roadway, that has the capacity to help bring the traffic into, to and from, that was the location. As part of this, we're, we're okay building that, that's fine, that's, that's part of our project, as far as we're concerned. I think I've heard either-or, through the duration of these meetings and so forth, that will be installed. People that are doing commercial, on the commercial real estate will want them, people buying it will want direct access, we think that's the right thing to do. I did, I do have Shane King, when we get to the down and details of the traffic study, Shane King from Olson is here to answer any particular questions, but I will add this, when we look at a traffic study, we look at what the property was, in this instance. The property was a golf course, it was a restaurant, it was a place with recreational activities, swimming, tennis, and so, and this was, back in the day, very busy location, it had events, and people coming for weddings, that were parked on the street at some time, and there, thousands of people coming to, you know, locations, we tend to forget that, now that it's gone, the building's down, the parking lots are missing, and it's just out there with trees. When we do the study, we use that as a baseline, and so, that's what is approved for, the zoning is still there for B1, and we use that to look at those trip differentials. So when we talk, and Shane is talking, the new trips are true at 3,200, we'll have to differentiate that to what the existing trips were to the site, so, overall, it's 1,100, you know, new trips that are being generated from the proposed uses, of both the commercial and the residential. And just one little quick clarification, I had to ask, planning, because we had no record of a traffic study for the Dial Center, and, and there wasn't one, and there's, there was some reasoning behind it, but, it actually created less trips than if that property were to develop as residential, and when it's just a residential application, they typically do not ask for trips to be, or, in traffic study, be generated for that, that property. I'll just go over the timeline really quick, because there's the question of being rushed through the process, again, we've been, of course, been doing this behind closed doors for some time, but, in, in August of this year, we actually restarted reaching out for some general feedback, and started inquiring of people I knew in the vicinity, of general feedback for the property, met with planning on August 31st, actually, for the very introductory meeting of that, so Bennett was really accurate, about months ago. We had several meetings during October with neighbors, and then, November 28th is when we had the neighborhood meeting, and we made notification to everyone, which about the time, there was an article in the Journal Star, the application, it's funny how application hits, and it's in the Journal Star, and it was public knowledge at that point. I do want to say and reiterate transparency completely, we've had several discussions, we've had several proposals to the general neighborhood, number, neighbor representatives, their attorneys, and we have just generally not gotten anything written in stone, and before you today, so, it is generally, there's, I should say, no, from our perspective, no unwillingness to work with them, we just had not gotten to a point that we had gotten an agreement on paper and presented to you, so it is as submitted today, so, that's where we are. I'm done.
Okay. Questions?
Yep, okay, I'll go ahead and start. Okay, so, when, when we talk about the density for R1, does that include only the permitted activities, or does that include conditional and special-use activities?
For the R1?
Uh-huh, for the zoning.
I'm not sure.
Because, I mean, if you look at that, there's only a couple permitted use, then there's conditional, then there's special use.
Yeah, on the, as far as the 51 units, that, that's permitted, so, I mean, permitted you have, I mean, single families, obviously permitted, duplexes are permitted, so, I, I believe we're just looking at just permitted uses.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so 51 was the count on that?
Correct.
And then, when you did, you mentioned that you had, did not look at keeping those lot sizes similar to the lot sizes in the area, that was not something that was considered?
I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't say under this current discussion, I could just generally speak to my involvement in, with previous clients looking at the property, in which we looked at large lots, but it makes a little bit of a leap here, I guess, so, we, we've came up with some plans that would indicate like 12 or 14 lots on the property, when you run the performer on it, these lots were somewhere in the valuation between 400,000 and 600,000 dollars per lot, just to make, you know...
Okay.
You know, from, from the accounting side, that's anywhere from asking price to what they can pay for it, and then turn that around from an development perspective, so, that never moved forward as part of, I would say, a viable option, so, we've had this conversation, I'll repeat it, there were, there's not many multimillion-dollar houses built in Lincoln, I mean, there's, if you go to building safety, pull the building permits, and you look at what was over a million to 2 million or 3 million dollars, there's probably about 20 a year, okay? So if we bring on 14, if somebody brings on 14, and then you capture 10% of that market in Lincoln, building two homes a year, and I just don't think that, well, I could say nobody had that appetite to bite off and develop themselves for something like that.
Okay. And the villa examples that you brought up for Bishop Heights, and then out by Firethorn?
Yeah.
So Bishop Heights, that is a gated community, correct, that comes right off of 27th?
It, it, there are gates there, I've seen them, I'm not sure if it's completely gated or not, and I should make a clarification, the, the concept was just Bishop Square, and I think just the, the type of community that it is, and so, those are townhomes, those are three and four type, maybe even five type plexes of units, they're all attached, these are all gonna be single-family, that we were wanting to try to maintain that character of single-family home living at this location. When, pictures and trying to, to establish what, what those look like, we used a couple Firethorn examples, if you'd like to see what, what we looked at, there was, we were, back in 2000, I think 2011, 2013, we did some villa, just, or villas, I call them villas or patio homes, right adjacent to the original clubhouse. right adjacent to the original clubhouse. These are the ones that I've presented to neighbors. I can show that to you. Take the address off of there. So, okay, there we go. So, I mean, these are very similar type of homes that we're looking at, you know, mimicking. We want, we want to try to be part of the development. So you can see, like I said, they're going to be, these are all, these, these homes were all brick, and they've got the character of the landscaping around it and so forth. So we've utilized these, and the covenants are being prepared to be very similar to that, to that extent. So you could, this, this is a front view here for this one. This will be a side view. Like I said, the type and feel of what that community looked like, and from the, from the sidewalk area, side loaded garages, so those garages are hidden and so forth. So.
Yeah. Those are off of the golf course. I think I've been in some of those.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, from an access point, because we've been talking a lot about it in the letters, and traffic, when you talk about the traffic study versus what the Knolls was, versus what the Knolls is today, comparisons. And as we look at access from Old Cheney, did you look at possibly accessing the residential internally from Old Cheney? Have you done that study yet?
Not through the commercial. We, we did really, I mean, we tried to maintain a separation between the two. So there was not connectivity through, I mean, I'm not sure that the connection between the two would have the advantage of people driving through the commercial to get to other home. I, I would think, even if it was a couple houses further, that they would take Norman and then to the, to the entrance way. And so, for like, for instance...
Mm-hmm.
Here's, here's the drive that we're proposing. It's new access, and it's coming through here. I, I don't know that there's much difference in coming through, especially if you go to the south. Excuse me.
The zoom type?
So, and, I guess from the perspective of the housing, and trying to keep a separation, trying to keep a buffer, the noise and everything else that we're talking about, we're trying to, to maintain that 50-foot buffer. We had not elected to do that. We do have sidewalks that would go along here to provide connectivity, walkability of the project. So that was, I guess, planning decision not to implement that component to it.
If I can jump in here, Brad, while you have that up. So the entrance point to the commercial area is what you've proposed there in the middle there along Old Cheney, correct?
Yes. You're talking, yes, up here?
Correct.
Yep.
And so from the staff report, it said that there was some discussion about either Old Cheney or Norman, and that, you know, the traffic study might impact that. But you're, you're stating right now definitively that the entrance will be from Old Cheney?
Yes.
To the commercial area?
Yes. Let me clarify, just a couple of things, because this can get, so there, our report, our traffic study, took both considerations into account.
Got it.
It wasn't either/or. That's why the staff report was written that way.
Got it.
So, one is that if there were improved, so if we didn't have this, we didn't have the turn lane, a turn lane would have to be eastbound and onto Norman, okay? Because we would be, more people would be turning their way to get into the commercial area.
Correct.
And so, one tidbit of information is, this is the half mile. And so, any improvements, right, turn lanes, increased capacity, increased safety, those would actually be, impact be reimbursable. Okay? The eighth mile to the east, where we're proposing, we have shown the new turn lane into the commercial area, is, is not eligible. It will not be paid by public funds. It is 100% a development cost. And another little clarification, there will, as part of this turn lane improvement, if that's, which I'm indicating is the way that we would like to go, there would be some capacity markings and so forth. Because there's no median out there, it's just lanes. There would be some additional turn lane capacity with markings improvements at Norman Road.
Got it.
Yeah. And Shane's here, any, any details of this? But he, he just made sure that we're, we're still proposing this. So there will be this access, and there will be this driveway out to it. Yeah. Just, just for clarification.
Yeah. Understood.
Because if anybody wants to go west, they will very likely pull out of the commercial center and get into the turn lane to turn to the west. But, but the majority of the trips are actually shown to the, to the east.
So the sidewalk that's being built to connect the development to the commercial center, it makes it look like there's still green space. Is that intentional? Just like a tiny little sliver of, no, where the sidewalk is, does it go into the, does it, can you walk, can you walk from your villa to the commercial space?
No. I mean, if you wanted to go hiking, but what intent is to have birmingham between the two. So visually, you're not going to, you're not going to have that, and it will be landscaped with trees and so forth.
But the sidewalk that's shown on the picture is going to be there, right?
Yes. There will be a, the birmingham will cut down in that location. That location of the sidewalk fulfills several purposes. That's why the sidewalk's there and not anywhere else, is because the grade will be flatter. That will be our overflow. So there's drainage that comes through all the...
Oh, good. Thanks.
All right. So there's drainage that comes all the way down here, and it comes down these property lines. There's the existing storm sewer that will be picking up, and will go through the streets, and follow the streets. And then there will be storm sewer and overflow. So at that point, there will be overflow, so there'll be flat sidewalk. We'll allow that to be drained, and that will go into the detention pond at that location.
Okay.
And there's, there's other utilities in that corridor as well.
But I was just, so let's say if a restaurant goes in on Old Cheney, and you live in these villas, you can't walk on that sidewalk, because then there's, to get there, you have to go out onto Norman Road to get there?
You live in the, I'm sorry, to cut you off. If, if you live in the villas here?
Yeah.
You would come out and walk?
That's, that was my original question. The way that it is drawn, it makes it look like the sidewalk does not connect with the parking lot.
Oh.
Because there's green space there. And so I was like, do you have to then, if the sidewalk ends, and you walk through green space to get to, that's, that was my original question.
It will be connected. Yeah. Well, the commercial center is being a use permit. When they come forward with actual building permit plans, we'll have to meet pedestrian circulation standards.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions right now?
Can I answer one question? Tracy, I believe you asked about the current zoning. A couple of things. I, I don't know if you wanted to see the, the actual uses that are permitted. So I, I didn't say that. Andrew did. The, the whole concept of going from two and a quarter to five acres is, we're restricting uses, so they are less intensive. They're not bringing, they're not bringing a lot of trips. So anything that, I mean, if they just sold the property as is today, that B1 carries a lot of flexibility, let's put it that way. Yeah. And it's kind of scary to me, and probably the people behind me, scary thoughts of convenience stores, and, you know, you could end up with a Chick-fil-A and a Starbucks on that B1. It just, because it's zoned by right, they could show up with a building permit tomorrow. Because that's, that's up to, more to the corner. We did a, we did a, just, okay, Tracy was going to answer, ask the question.
[laughing]
And what that would look like. I wouldn't say it's a masterpiece of what it would look like, but... If somebody, again, somebody just said B1, and we want to move forward with a preliminary plat, so that we don't have to come before and be scrutinized about waivers and so forth, this is something that would meet that standard.
How many dwelling units do you have there?
61. And that would meet, that would meet the R1 under the current standards for density. That would meet the setback requirements. It would be a townhome unit. It would be, you know, a common wall type of home. And I can definitively tell you, that's not, it's part of this application. This is like the furthest thing from our mind. The spacing requirements on a townhome is another 10-feet side yard. You won't get the size of homes that you want. The valuation that we're trying to hit the marketplace, I don't think you're going to get the people that we're trying to, to bring to this, to this project on something like that.
Thank you for showing that. I think that's very important to, to everyone, to see what can go in there by right, right now.
I just wanted to clarify, and this one kind of showed it. The only property that was, is currently B1 is where you kind of have the, I'm assuming you could put a convenience store in there, just probably with the vape shop, just to make a point, right?
Right.
[laughing]
That's it, right there. If you can see that.
Sorry. And the rest of it is currently R1, and we're changing the north end of it, or you're asking to change the, the north end of it to B2, along with that property to B2?
Correct.
Just to clarify, right? Am I, because I've heard a couple times, oh, it's all B1, and no, we are changing part of the R1 to B2, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Along that, along Old Cheney.
That, I think, I mean...
You want to change that to B2?
Probably that line. I mean, in our drawings, that line is probably that line that we're changing, that
North.
B1 to R, R1.
Right.
And then the rest of that north side is B2.
B2. So we are changing some R1 to B2.
That is correct. Yes. And...
Even where the maintenance shed is.
Even where the maintenance shed is.
Is currently R1.
Yeah. And, and, take into consideration, please, the limitation of those uses, you know, if, what, what those B1 type of uses are compared to what is allowed. We, we'd, as part of the project, you know, and talking to the planning department, this, this is the list of all B1, so not, that's, that's existing. These are permitted, not, and so, I didn't even, I can't imagine anybody getting a conditional use passed, so I didn't even list them. And so, then, then this is the list of permitted uses in the B2. And the red ones have been, have been eliminated as possible options. And I'll just say it, we were very willing to go further, but taking some of this out, planning advised that it could get confusing. And so, we took the big items off. Hotels, motels, apartments, because apartments are going to be, they're in approved use in the B2. So, you know, we don't, we don't want, that's not the vision for this. These are complimentary uses in this particular area.
Tell us what kind of tenants or what kind of uses are a part of your vision for that B2 area?
I used pioneers and the seal, which is like the preserve area. I used that as an example. There's a little bit more commercial there than what we'd be, but there's office space. There's, there's a medical office in there, there's office, there's a bank on the corner, momos. That would be in, in our mind, in our vision. Those would be perfect type uses for this community. Love to see a, a new restaurant in this area that more, again, sit down. No, no fast food, no drive-throughs are eliminated as part of this.
I previously asked about the, the traffic study, and kind of comparing what it is right now compared to this potential use, what, how, you know, like what the increase would be, or maybe decrease, but do you have?
I did bring him for something.
I wanted to get your money's worth, I guess.
Shane King. I'm with Olson, 601 P Street, 68508. Answer your question. Brad gave a couple of numbers already, a little bit comparing the, the what was to what site plans you're seeing. That daily number is about 1100, what's called the net increase, right? If you take what was and subtract off proposed. So I guess the number I'll give you would be a quarter of that. What I did, though, when you first asked the question, ran through the numbers, was still just a, a comparison of today, what's out, so no, no land uses out there, like, right, when we counted the intersection. That's about a 4% increase to the intersection, is what, I don't know if that's the, the type of number you're after, let's give you a feel for, that's what we're looking at, at that arterial intersection. I'd also point out, I guess, two other things with that. The, the South Leg today is, may as well say that the North Leg is about three times greater volume than the South. So there's a disparity, just kind of in what, what the signal is handling already. So this will kind of bring the South Leg into a degree of magnitude.
So when you say the North Leg, you mean north of Old Cheney?
Yes.
And the South Leg, south of Old Cheney?
Yes. Yeah. We're talking Norman Road versus Tipperary Trail, technically what we'd be saying. And I would say the commission also, just make sure you understand as well, talking through it, I don't mind which vocabulary we use, but there's a difference in vehicles and trips.
Right.
So every, if you leave home in the morning, go to work, come back, one vehicle, two trips. So keep that in mind as well, when you hear, you know, for example, the, this net increase of 1100, that's 550 vehicles making a trip, going away and coming back. So just want to point out that detail as well.
Thank you. I know that there are many concerns in the letters, and so I kind of wanted to, to clarify some of that. Thank you.
Shane and I had a conversation. There was a lot of discussion about children walking to school in front. Would you share the, when they do it, I didn't know this. When they do a traffic count, they actually do pedestrian counts as well. I mean, and so they do have some AM, PM data that I think would be helpful.
Sure.
Yeah. Show that real quick. I guess the comment I would make on just distribution, as, as you continue to look at that, that site layout, I think the color one Brad had up really shows it the best. But everything lends itself to come from Old Cheney, to come in to the, the two access points, it would be to Norman or Old Cheney, and then to leave. There's, if you just zoom out at a map, there's really not a reason to continue south. On, on Norman Road, you're just going to go over and just tee into the Knolls and, and have to keep winding your way down, unless you live there. There's just not a reason to, to use that as a cut through. There's no time savings, and you're just, you're going on a circuitous route. Regarding the pedestrian counts, though, yeah. So counts are always taken on, on school days, and, you know, good, we can't count on daylight today. Even school would have been in session, there's no counts today. So in, in late April, the last, this was counted in '21. So there were, the only time, the only hour that we documented pedestrians crossing Old Cheney was that 2:45 to 3:45. So that hour after school, and the number was four. Two, two peds and two bikes is what was documented. So the other times of day, the, the AM peak hour, the midday peak hour, there was actually zero pedestrians crossing Old Cheney documented. So, yeah, again, it's just, it's good to have some of the data and just have an understanding of what we've documented.
That was on a school day?
Yep.
Normal. Okay.
Yep.
Other questions? I did have one other question. You were talking about, you know, like, you, you had the neighborhood meeting, you, you proposed some, some compromises. Can you give us an idea of what some of those compromises were?
I can, and I, and I, I don't mind. I just, the problem is, I don't know, I guess, what's acceptable and what's not. So I'm not sure exactly what to, to add to that, but I can, I mean, yeah. So for example, let me get a map up here. Brad, I don't know where to start. I'll tell you. So, you know, for example, you know, one of the concerns, B2 commercial being probably one of the bigger concerns here. So when we go to B2, height is, max height's 55 feet. 35 feet for the R1. This is actually, this site is actually a little bit lower, so you're already, you know, you're going to have a little bit of difference in, in the height there. And so, you know, one thing we said is, what if we say everything, for example, east of that road, we keep to 40 feet? Therefore, you really are maxing out at 35, the same as the house. Being one example. Presumably, that's, would be very acceptable. I just, I, I, again, so I don't know for sure.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, we got a couple.
Well, we, there was, there is some concern and probably some precedence of, of property... Well, we, there was, there is some concern and probably some precedence of, of properties that are adjacent to newly formed commercial area. We've got the buffer that we've, we've talked about. There was a proposal to provide some additional screening to those residences. And so, there was a, I, this is just, we, we had provided, the golf course has some more mature trees that are, they, they can't get too big, or you can't move them, and they won't survive if you move them. But there are some that are more of those kind of coniferous, they're the, the pine trees and so forth, that are going to have, you know, year-round visibility. We had offered to move those to help some visual obstruction in, in current open spaces. This isn't redoing everybody's landscape plan, but there's only two properties that, that are there on the east side that have some open spaces that could be, had some advantage, I guess, of having some additional screening. I will say, there was a request of like an eight-foot fence, and that's not desired from the realm and side of things. Pushing dumpsters back, again, no problem. Illuminated signage, I don't think we had a problem with that. You know, we were setting, I think, both off at least 100 feet, doubling the 50 to 100 for those dumpsters being screened. I think it's pretty typical, but we can put that in writing.
One thing, I guess, one thing we had discussed, just to make it very clear, again, trying, trying to make this, to avoid any confusion later, would be, so this is proposed as 36, 36 single-family dwelling units. And, you know, through an administrative process, you can probably increase that by 15% or something, but we, you know, we could say, I mean, the plan is clearly to not do anything else, to, and, you know, if, if that need, one of those suggestions was if that needed to be in writing, to make it very clear that you couldn't go through that administrative process, that would be fine, because there's no plans to do anything further. If there's concern about kind of a, coming in later and trying to get a couple, a little more density out of it. So things like that. Just to clarify that we're.
This just gives me an idea of, you know, the give and take.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to recommend we take an eight-minute break to 3 o'clock before we start testimony in support and opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Okay, we will continue with public hearing. We have heard from staff and applicant. We will now take any testimony in support. Testimony in support of either change of zone 22035, use permit 22013, or special permit 22038. Is there any testimony in support? Is there any neutral testimony? And testimony in opposition?
Do you make any difference which one?
It doesn't.
Thank you. I'm Tom Smith. I'm representing my wife and myself. We live at 5910 Norman Road, which is the second house to the south of the former golf course. I've lived there 48 years. I've known for 48 years that the land behind me could be residential. I've known that there could be two acres or two and a quarter acres of B1 commercial, and I'm just here to tell you, I'm not opposed to having the zoning remain B1 and R1. We don't see any reason for more commercial in the area. There's an office building at 14th and Old Chaney that was vacant until just recently. They still have a floor or two to rent. There's a lot of open space off of 16th Street. There's open space on 27th Street. There's 12 banks within a two-mile radius of this particular location. We don't need commercial. And we are here, I'm here to oppose, strongly oppose, changing R1 to B2 and B1 to B2. The character of the neighborhood will change considerably. I'm not even going to address traffic, because traffic didn't bother me when the existing Knowles Restaurant was there, other than the people that parked in my driveway, which happened periodically. So I'm, I'm really just against having any zone change at all. We're, we're willing to live with what exists. Next thing is that, based on the description of the, of the lots that they want to develop, they're roughly 9,000 square feet. The houses around the Knowles and Norman Road, there's 14 homes. The average lot's probably about three-quarters of an acre, ranging from just over a half-an-acre to a little over one acre. So what we're going to be backed up against, in my backyard at least, will be, I'll have a portion of three different lots looking into my backyard or me looking into their backyard. We'd simply like to see larger lots along the perimeter of where the existing houses are, and then build more density as you move toward Old Chaney. We'd be happy with that. We could live with that. And that's what I'm here to talk about, is we don't need a zone change. We need, we need a better plan. And as far as, as housing goes, I wouldn't mind if you put some affordable housing down around Old Chaney. So if you've got any questions, I'll try to answer them.
I want to make sure that I understand, you'd be okay with having a gas station where the former Knowles Restaurant is?
Absolutely. Where that B1 zoning is, put a gas station there.
Okay.
Other questions? Thank you.
My name is Craig Smith. I live with my wife, 5930 Norman Road. We, as a family, have three properties that we've owned for 30 years on the golf course, on both Norman and also on the Knowles Drive. And we're in opposition with this. I agree with Tom as far as just leaving the zoning the way it is, because on the B1, if, if you look at what they have proposed, there's already gas stations within that, you know, a half a mile one way and, and, you know, several blocks the other way. Also, those folks like to be on a hard corner. And there's the R1, and then the required setbacks around this B1, and I think it's important, when you look at this, that you understand that what they have proposed there as far as a, a coffee shop drive-in and that sort of thing, if they're not on a hard corner, they're not interested. So it, being involved in the development business for several years, we feel that what they've shown probably isn't what would go on that particular property. The market will decide what that is. Again, we, we like the concept of, of the Villas. We're concerned about the setbacks between each of these properties. And then also, if, if you go on to the existing residential, and he would come up with a plan to use that throughout that area, and then go to higher density along Old Chaney, we think it would be a good solution. The other thing, and I think some other people are going to voice opinions on this. I think the one thing that I looked at is, when I went through the documents, I, we had done a floodplain analysis, because being there for so many years, we'd seen flood issues both on Old Chaney, I mean, I mean, on the Knowles Drive and also on Norman. On Norman, just down from our house, across from where Mike works, and there's two inlets there, and it dumps into a pipe, and I think it's either 24 or 30-inch pipe. Well, there's so much surface drainage, because there's no other inlet, all the way to the crest of the hill, which the Knowles Drive goes, just literally blocks the, to the south. All of that water comes down, and it inundates the street there. So it overflows all that, and then it finds its way down between Henning's House and George Busalis's old house. And it floods down through there. And then we see the same thing over on, on, on the Knowles Drive, where my parents' house is and my sister-in-law's, Lisa Smith. When that is so flat for approximately four blocks, that, that what we see is it over, overruns the sidewalks, and it'll run down the 5901, down their driveway, into the backyard and between the houses along that street. And so it is draining that entire basin onto the golf course. And so when I looked at the analysis on this, I sent a note over to Tim Zach and Bob Simmer. And so when I looked at the analysis on this, I sent a note over to Tim Zack and Bob Simmering in regards with this to expand, to at least follow the topog line to the top of the crest of the hill, which is the houses on the east side of Norman, and increase the area to actually calculate what is affecting this particular, this property. Because we feel like it hits that 40-acre threshold. And underneath the new floodplain guidelines that are going to be adopted in March,
One more minute.
they should consider doing the analysis on this so we understand those issues. I think, as you know, there's no sidewalks in both Norman and on the Knolls Drive. And the safety is a concern, and I think, I appreciate your, any questions?
Yeah, so what I hear you saying, and make sure that I'm understanding you correctly, is that you'd like to leave a B1 because you don't think it would develop as B1. So that's why you're okay with it staying that way?
Well, I think that the density that they indicate with a coffee shop and a drive-through restaurant, I don't think with the setbacks that are required and the parking load on the two acres, I don't think you're going to get the density or that they have shown on that particular site. And I think that's better because then you're going to probably end up with one user. And yet, there'll be more density as far as traffic right at that location. But it's so close to the corner that it's better than having this, you know, 70,000 square feet of commercial at that indicate, that area. The other thing that wasn't done here is generally when we look at how we do connections, we try to align the driveways with the other commercial or like the nursing, the Knolls Retirement Center across the street. And none of these driveways align. And that's something else that we should probably consider.
Thank you. I do have a question.
Yes.
Actually, your testimony triggered something that was in some of the letters that we received, and I meant to ask about that earlier. But the floodplain guidelines and that conversation, to be honest, much of what you said is above my head. However, obviously, we've spent quite a bit of time ourselves hearing testimony about the pending floodplain guidelines. So I want to, I guess I want to ask you to go over that portion of what you shared again.
Well, I think what you probably need to do is understand it and have one of the city officials explain this. But from what I understand, it changes the waterway widths and how this will drain through there and how it's managed so that going forward, when you look at that, it instills safety for all of the new tenants that are going to be building and buying houses in here, that they don't have a flood issue. And so I think that it's probably better if Tim discusses what the changes are and what those changes would do to affect the design in this project.
Helpful. Thank you very much.
All right.
Any other questions? Other testimony?
Hi. My name is Lisa Smith, and I live at 5921 the Knolls with my kids. I have to say first of all that I wish I was home right now making Christmas cookies with them. But alas, I'm here trying to convince you about the negative effects of the development of the Knolls Plaza will have on my neighborhood. First off, I find it hard to believe that this land is that empty for seven years. And now we need to push through all these zoning changes when such a short window. The timing, to me, seems a little suspect at best. I've only lived at the Knolls for several years, but I've watched new families move in while some neighbors have lived there for many, many years. And one thing is constant, is that we take care of our homes and the property. And many have put a large amount of money into updating them and improving them. This neighborhood is historic. There aren't many like it in Lincoln, and it has a character that it's hard to duplicate. The changes that Mr. Bustalis is desiring will change the dynamic of the neighborhood. I imagine that some of you believe that we don't want the land to be developed at all, but there may be some that think that. But we realize it's going to be developed. But we want to keep the essence of the neighborhood intact. And piling villas on top of each other and building commercial buildings definitely will change that. I feel that there might not be much we can do about the residential portion on this. But other than, I want to say that the type of houses that these villas that he wants to build on such a small piece of land and ranging from 2,200 to 3,500 square feet, but ranging in price from $800,000 to $1.2 million, I believe he said, does that even match the market that's available in Lincoln? I think Brad said that they looked at these one-acre lots and they deemed them feasibly, maybe, couldn't find any feasibility about that. I venture to say that a 2,500-square-foot house at $1 million is pretty unfeasible as well. I also think if these villas were built in an open area, that the lack of spacing might not seem as significant. But when you, when the entire perimeter is homes that are on almost acre lots, it's going to seem more crowded. The only green space that seems to be there is going to be our backyards. Many of us have no fencing or landscaping barriers, and so we'll need to add all those things as well. On the residential portion, I strongly oppose this. The safety issue alone should be paramount on that decision. I find it interesting that he wants to build the largest building adjacent to the back of the Knolls landowner. He could put that building behind these luxury villas, but he's not doing that. He's abutting it to the landowner. We have a lot of elderly and families in the neighborhood, and because there are no sidewalks, we walk our pets and exercise and push strollers through these streets. I'm especially concerned adding the 3,000 cars to the area is an obvious safety concern. I hope that you'll consider keeping the commercial zoning as it is, and thus keeping the flow of traffic to a minimum. And our neighborhoods will be safer. I want to say that, when you keep this in mind, that Mr. Bustalis has been making money on this property and this piece of land as he operated at the Knolls Golf Course and Restaurant for many, many years. We all supported him. We were members. We went to his restaurant. So I, please keep in mind that we don't want one man's greed to get the absolute last scent out of this piece of land.
One more minute.
To ruin our neighborhood. So, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Thanks for listening.
Hi, I'm Jeff Bazler. I live at 585 the Knolls with my wife and two small children, and thank you for taking the time to listen to me today. There's four issues that I have with the proposed development. The first issue, there's been a complete lack of transparency throughout the design process of this development. At no time was there any consideration for the needs or interests of the neighborhood. When the neighborhood concerns were finally brought up, the response was, learn to like it because it could, we could make it a lot worse for you. We could put in more houses and larger commercial buildings, and there's nothing you can do about it. This attitude is the opposite of being constructive, respectful, and neighborly. As a result, no one, I repeat, no one is satisfied with development as proposed. Indeed, it undermines the sense of community for our family and the dozens of families impacted. The solution requires the disinfectant of sunshine and transparency. The city leaders must step forward to protect the interests of the citizens and these families. The second issue is the increased traffic. At rush hour in the morning between 3:00 to 6:00 in the evening, it is literally impossible to cross or turn left at Old Chaney from the Knolls. As a result, all traffic is funneled through the Norman intersection, as it is right now. Our commute to work and shuttling our three-year-old and six-year-old to school is a challenge and not without risk. As a result of development, there'll be thousands of extra cars on Norman Road and throughout the neighborhood, effectively making us prisoners in our own neighborhood. The solution would be to please leave the commercial zoning as it is, two acres. The developers claim they are doing us a favor by changing the zoning from two acres of B1 to five acres of B2. To any rational person, this is an absurd claim. Adding three acres of commercial development in a neighborhood for a total of five acres will only exacerbate the traffic and safety issues I mentioned above. Issue number three is a lack of reasonable setbacks. The proposed homes are packed in with very high density, more than four times as dense as the current neighborhood. The side lots come within 10 feet of the existing homes. As a result, the neighborhood is completely changed. These setbacks as proposed are the bare minimum and are far smaller than anywhere else in this or nearby neighborhoods. A solution, as was done in the west side development, would be larger setbacks, including side and rear setbacks. Moreover, having only backyards about backyards and not side yards to backyards would be extremely helpful. The fourth and final issue is there are public turnabouts or cul-de-sacs and parking lots within feet of the backyards of several existing homes without any buffer. The proximity of public streets and parking lots create a danger for the families living adjacent to them. This public access introduces an unknown and dangerous element to the neighborhood, such as property damage, theft, risks that our children would be hit by a car if they are playing and peeping toms. I asked of the commission, would they allow their children or grandchildren to play within feet of public streets? Which will be the reality for many of us if this development is approved. I don't think so. These public roads and lots effectively make our prisoners childrens of their own home, as it will not be safe for them to play in the outlying areas of our backyard. The solution would be to eliminate any of the cul-de-sacs that are adjacent to the backyards, and again, having only backyards abutting backyards. Thank you very much.
You have any questions?
I'm just, yeah, I'm a little confused. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, side yards versus backyards, is there a particular reason versus looking at the side of somebody's house versus them hanging out in their backyard?
More space.
You're just talking about it from a spacing issue, not from a, I was just curious about that.
Yeah, the side yards, those side yards come up.
Side yards were only reduced internally, not next to the existing. Yeah. And you realize there's increased screening on the cul-de-sacs?
Right.
And your letter didn't, what you just read just didn't say that. It said the opposite.
It comes up to the neighborhood.
I think there's some confusion. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is John Badami. I reside at 5909 Norman Road. I've lived there for over 20 years and actually grew up on Rolling Hills, which is just west of that. So I'm really a lifelong resident of the neighborhood. So, you know, I think what you've seen in the letters from the neighbors and what you've heard today is, you know, are all very valid concerns that the neighborhood has. Obviously, the traffic. I think many of us are in favor of just leaving the commercial zone as is and to not increase it so it is more compatible with the neighborhood. There's stormwater concerns. The commercial building setback from residential should be maximized. The largest building should not be that close to the residential. It should be pushed farther to the south. Decrease commercial density next to the existing residential. Rear residential yard setbacks need to be maximized and require landscape buffers next to existing residential. Now, the neighborhood certainly understands that the parcel will be redeveloped. But I think what you've heard in these letters is really the frustration and disappointment in the lack of communication between the developer and the neighborhood to help elevate this project, to make it better for both parties. Case in point, so when we went through this on the west side, the developer was Dial Properties and the landowner was the same as it is now. That was back in 2018, 2019. They allowed adequate time and involvement and consideration to the neighborhood by both the developer and the landowner by listening and compromising to do the following things for the betterment of the neighborhood and their project. Increasing setbacks from adjacent residential properties, pushing density north closer to Old Chaney Road, providing landscaping above and beyond the city standards in a walking trail, providing exterior lighting that is considerate to the neighborhood, and providing insight and transparency as to the building's scale, exterior materials, and massing, none of which we've seen. This all was discussed and understood over a series of meetings with the neighbors. And we believe the outcome and overall project was better for both parties due to this dialogue. So however, in this instance, because of the expedited communication with the neighborhood, at one meeting, I would ask that you defer approval of these three items and recommend the developer provide more detailed information to the neighborhood, consider its concerns, and then come back to vote on these items in the future for both the betterment of the project and consideration of the neighborhood. Thank you.
So were you at the meeting on the 28th?
I was.
Okay. We didn't ask this earlier. I was going to ask it in the fall, but do you have an idea about how many neighborhood members were there?
Oh gosh, I would say there's probably 40, maybe 50.
Oh, well, it did.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Hi, Jacob McGlade, 5727 the Knolls, speaking on behalf of myself and all other neighbors that are unable to be here, whether it's due to age, the weather, or unfortunately because of the timing due to the holidays. We believe that was strategic by the developer to schedule all of these meetings at this time. A short one year ago, Lincoln adopted the 2050 Plan Forward Comprehensive Plan. That plan specifically designates the parcels in question as approximately two acres of commercial with the remainder as residential. Urban density, a use consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods on both sides of Old Chaney. In my experience, most jurisdictions throughout the country use their taxpayer-funded comprehensive plan as a reference guide to help when developments like this are in question and face opposition. They're not used as a tool for developers to exploit loopholes in these comprehensive plans to sneak this through the process. Increasing the commercial acreage from two acres to five acres by utilizing a change of zone from R1 to B2 is not commonly seen in Lincoln. As provided by the planning department, this particular change of zone has only been approved twice since 2010, one of which being the Costco development, in which no living neighbors actually were adjacent to the property lines. And the other was a small portion of the Bishop Heights PUD, which had very few letters of opposition submitted because it was already an existing commercial center. The neighborhood's concerns of increased traffic and safety are directly tied to the approval of this change of zone. Per the development team's traffic study, 2,800 of the 3,200 average daily trips will be tied directly to the commercial portion of this development. If the zoning maintains its current status and complied with the comprehensive plan, these traffic count numbers would drop substantially. Approximately 9.43 cars per day per house, or trips per day per house, which according to that plan is about 600-ish trips plus the B1 zoning. In a neighborhood with very few sidewalks, it is uncommon, not uncommon to see elderly residents, families with young children, and other members of the community walking the street on a daily basis. Irregardless if they're crossing Old Chaney or not, we are still walking these neighborhood streets without sidewalks. Adding over 3,000 vehicle trips per day to this intersection will only cause further congestion, tempting these vehicles to shortcut through the neighborhood, further risking the safety of the neighbors walking the streets. Additionally, from January through August of this year, there were nine traffic crashes reported to LPD within immediate proximity of this development, four of which were injury-related. As evidenced by the $1.5 million LTU retaining wall project currently under construction and other miscellaneous retaining wall repairs along Old Chaney abutting the Southwood neighborhood, it is not uncommon for vehicles to leave the road at high speeds towards homes as close as 42 feet from the road. It is worth mentioning that a separate conversation with LTU staff actually revealed that the wall currently under construction isn't even structurally supported to protect the homes from vehicles, but it's actually designed just to hold up Old Chaney Road. As a representative for the neighborhood, and like I said, especially those who are unable to be here, I ask you to deny the change of zone request from R1 to B2 and maintain the current zoning of two acres of commercial with the remainder as residential acreage. Even though the scare tactic provided by Olson's, we still want that change. A decision that will be in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the neighborhood's character that has been there for the last seven years. Thank you for your time and consideration. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Hello. My name is Nikki Scott, and I live at 5727 the Knolls as well. I am speaking today in opposition to the proposed development plan. I want to start by opposing the commercial proposal. It does not comply with the 2050 Comprehensive Plan. It is over two and a half times the size that was originally plotted as commercial property. It is increasing from two acres to almost five acres. This directly affects me as my home is one of the properties that will be adjacent to the proposed commercial lots. We bought our home knowing that there We bought our home knowing that there would likely be development behind us, but knowing that it was residential zoning behind our property, not commercial. Fast forwarded, and it is now not only the original two acres of commercial zoning, but five acres and moved to be directly adjacent to our property. The plan has completely changed and, to top it off, it does not comply with the 2050 comprehensive plan. On top of the increase of commercial acreage and it moving, the proposal has a 40-foot-high medical building with the possibility of 55 feet, based on their zoning proposal, on the corner that would be adjacent to our property. To help with this in perspective, the current maintenance building or the current maintenance shed is single-story and 60 feet from the nearest property line. And we knew it was there when we were moving in. That was part of our decision. It wasn't sprung on us. So this proposed massive building will be significantly taller and 10 feet closer to our properties. On top of this, this is part of the overall commercial property that does not comply with the 2050 comprehensive plan. Over the past several weeks, I've been paying attention to large commercial buildings among residential lots in both Lincoln and central Omaha. I've yet to find an example or many examples of this large of building near existing residential properties with only 50 feet of setback. If this is not the standard, then why is it being pushed through here? Especially when it does not comply with the overall 2050 comprehensive plan on top of it. This is all in addition to the significant change in traffic in an already busy area that has had several reported injury accidents this year. This is not safe for the neighborhood. I personally take my daughter and dog on walks regularly and it is definitely something to consider because there will be an increase in traffic. I next want to discuss the residential property proposal. One big concern of the neighborhood is the density. In the meeting with Olson, the Olson representative referenced the development at Firethorn Golf Course over and over with how similar it would be. We went and drove the Firethorn and we looked, Firethorn Development, and looked at it via map, and in my opinion, the density does not resemble the proposed Knowles development at all. At Firethorn, there were only six villas, and here they are proposing 36. At Firethorn, there were no existing residential properties that now have multiple villas immediately behind their property. With the proposed development here, we will all have villas immediately behind us and there are several existing homes, as mentioned previously, that might have portions of three villas shoved directly into their backyard. The density due to the small lot sizes and small setbacks does not coordinate with the existing neighborhood footprint. Thank you for your serious considerations of these concerns.
I just want to clarify, you, so your lot is on The Knowles and so you are, your backyard is directly abutting the new commercial, proposed commercial area?
We are one to the south.
The south?
Yep.
Okay.
So not directly on Old Cheney?
One lot in?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So you would, your property line would have a portion of that commercial area as well as the northernmost proposed residential area as well?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Burr. I reside at 5707 The Knowles with my husband Jeff Burr. We've lived at our house for 21 years. When we purchased the house 21 years ago, we went in full knowledge, knowing that it was R1 behind us. As Nikki just mentioned, we saw the maintenance sheds there. We knew. They are one-story. We were okay with that at the time. Again, we knew it was R1. As was mentioned previously, there is, there is a portion on Old Cheney that currently can house commercial units. I, for the life of me, I've thought about it. I don't understand why that commercial building, potentially two stories high, has to abut directly back up to my entire backyard. So when I look outside, that's what I'll see. When we bought this house, this was our forever house. I'm not one that likes to go from one area to another. We really thought about this purchase long and hard. It was our biggest investment at that time and we knew that it was R1, so we were okay with that. I just want to put on record that I do strongly, strongly oppose the rezoning from R1 to B2. I do not feel that that is necessary. That is my first point I wanted to make. The second point I do want to make is, as many folks have already mentioned, that this neighborhood is one that you do not see throughout Lincoln. There is a lot of character there. There is a lot of love that the homeowners put into maintaining their properties. I know when we first purchased our house, I didn't even look at the house. I walked straight to the backyard. My husband said, "Michelle, do you want to look at the house?" I said, "Nope, I want to look in the backyard." So I didn't, that wasn't even the backyard and the neighborhood and everything. That is what drew me there. The house, we've modified it. We've made modifications, as have many folks in the neighborhood. We can do that. We, that's within our ability to do. If this is rezoned from R1 to B2, we, there's nothing we can do about that. The only thing we can do is potentially put in a large berm behind our entire backyard, plant trees, and hope that, you know, we're still alive to see them when they're full grown. I mean, you just don't know. My husband had a heart attack a year ago at 49. You just don't know. You just don't know what life holds for you. So I would just ask a lot of coming together of the community because that, to me, is what Lincoln, Nebraska is really all about, is people coming together as a community and trying to work as a community. We understand there's going to be development. We understand that people need to make money and they need to provide for their own families. I understand that. But at the same time, we don't want to take away from the existing property owners that have lived there for such a long portion of their lives. So I just, again, want to reiterate, oppose the rezoning from R1 to B2 and if possible, with the houses that are going to go in there, if it could be on larger lots. Again, some of these houses, there is going to be three, three and a half lots directly behind their house. That isn't something that, you know, you just don't anticipate having three and a half lots directly behind your house. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much for your time. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Swoboda. I'm at 9500 West Dodge Street in Omaha, Nebraska, 68114. I just want to bring up two things that came up a little bit that I wanted to specifically address, one of which is the covenant issue, and I know that that might not be first and foremost for this commission, but I just wanted you to understand where it was and what it means to the development as it's put in front of you today. So what I'm showing you is what I, my hand-drawn, there we go. I'm gonna zoom in just a little bit. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay. So what I've done is approximated lots 45 and 46 of these lots along Norman there. Those two lots are subject to the covenants, okay? And so if the covenants are enforced and there's an injunction imposed, this whole plat would have to be redrawn. It's, the entryway to the, to this new development, to the proposed development, is blocked by the covenants. So that's, I just wanted you to see that so you could visually understand the importance of that issue and the significance of it going forward. Because what the covenants say is that lots should not be used for anything but residential purposes, number, and that's in number one there, and then it says, no lot shall be subdivided into smaller building lots. So if you go back to those covenants and the drawings, you can see that lots one and two, and I haven't drawn it very well, which is why I'm not in the engineering offices, but lot 46 is going to cut up or would cut up lots one and two of the subdivision. So that would be a lot split under the covenants. The other thing that I wanted to mention is the pending floodplain guideline changes and the importance of those and where they're at with regard to the city. They appear to be tracking along such that the city is going to consider those very soon. I think maybe next month. And so when you look at the footprint of what the drainage study was that went along with this plan and what we've asked the city to take a look at, the broader topo showing the whole drainage area, we believe that that meets that 40-acre requirement and would require further study and probably a different and greater drainage system. Right now, I'm understanding that there's a 24-inch pipe that's draining this. I've been out there, but only just recently, and I suspect that you all maybe have seen this area. I was shocked when I got over on the south side and I saw the dramatic change from the backyards of some of these people you've heard from today to the bottom of that. It's almost like a ravine, and unless you see it, you don't appreciate it. I certainly appreciate it. I'm like, where is all that water going to go? This is a bowl. This whole development is in a bowl, and I'm concerned about the fast-tracking of this. While they may have only been working on it for a few months, we've only been working on it for a few weeks. The timing of it in relation to those pending floodplain guideline changes, to me, this is trying to be shoehorned in before somebody finds out that it meets the higher drainage area. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, just in time.
Thank you for your testimony.
I'm Logan Otto and I live at 6,000 Norman Road with my wife and four children, aged 13 to 18. And I didn't plan to be here today, but I flew in from the Virgin Islands and I'm flying out in the morning, so I think this is important to me and to our community. I echo what the Smith said as, as far as some of the fact that we all anticipated this to remain an R1 neighborhood and generally in planning, we look for something that is a need and a desire. There's no desire here and there's certainly no need because three blocks either direction, there's excess capacity of commercial property. So this neighborhood does not need, be this changed from residential to business or B2. The other thing is, some of the things that in this neighborhood is the fact that we all have lots that are approximately 38,000 square feet. They want to make these 9,000 square foot lots, and just like we said, a lot of us will now have three neighbors across the fence and on proposals for variances that are asking for lots to be even smaller than is currently in the code. So I don't think that's, that's in character with the neighborhood to make the lots smaller than they are already proposed to be. And you heard some numbers of the number of lots or houses that can be here. That doesn't, the larger number didn't include the fact that some of this is going to be too. I am certainly in favor, as the first two speakers addressed, the fact that we would, at least in the neighborhood where the residents have been, to maintain the R1 zoning and if the density was higher as we got closer to Old Cheney, I think we're all okay with that. I think it would conform more with the neighborhood. And so, and as far as the watershed, I'm a farmer and our watersheds start from wherever water runs downhill. This has not been addressed in that manner, so we're not addressing the entire watershed on this, and this is being fast-lined because there is proposals coming to the city. I'm not a developer in the city, but I know there's things coming up and you probably all are aware of it, and I think there's going to be some health and safety issues that are going to be, can come back to haunt some people if this is fast-tracked through here and not addressing what the city is trying to do right now with the changes for the floodplains. And so I would just ask that some of this would be at least tabled and you would consider that we are wanting to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood without changes to our zoning and that we would address the watershed issue in light of the coming changes that this doesn't get grandfathered in. And then in the future, we're in a situation where we have jeopardized people's safety and the integrity of their own homes for the people that purchase here. So with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Additional testimony in opposition? Anyone else in person? I know we have a few on Zoom. Come on up.
My name is Jeff Burr and I live at 5707 The Knowles with my wife Michelle. I don't know if you heard, but I'm the guy who had a heart attack at 49.
Yay.
So now that's on video, which I've been trying to get on video for quite some time since then. I think the reason my wife pointed that out is, you know, just to say, life is short. You never know what's going to happen. And two, we walk through the neighborhood a lot. I have to walk constantly to stay in shape, you know, blah, blah, blah. And so we see the traffic consistently seven days a week. And although their numbers may say that there's only going to be X number of additional traffic in the neighborhood, I think the reality is, is that whether it's 100 or 200, there's going to be more traffic. It's going to be more dangerous. There's just no way around that. In addition to that, living on the corner, we see a lot of the action that takes place on Old Cheney. I think we've replaced our mailbox three times now and there's been cars in our yard. You know, there's racing going on. There's, you know, there's a whole host of things. Let me see, I think I've got something additional to say here. Residents, this is specifically from the Knowles Senior Living. Residents and I have been on the Zoom since one and I have missed three meetings with families and have another one scheduled for three. I apologize, but to honor the appointments that these families have made with me, apparently need to step away. My residents are primarily concerned with a single access point to the homes on Norman and the increases of traffic. This puts a strain on safety for them to walk the neighborhood and surrounding areas. Some of them love to take daily trips to CVS on 27th and Old Cheney. In fact, I've seen this gentleman riding his little scooter up and down Old Cheney on a regular basis, which is why it's important to keep the bike path clear, which currently it's not because of this massive wall they're building down the way, which by the way, if you could work that out for me, for my property, that would be magnificent. That would be my tax dollars, definitely, definitely. So, so she apologizes for not being able to send this information on her own.
That Hannah Elliott?
It was Hannah Elliott, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, that's all right. Just wanted to make sure.
I also like to add that, like my wife said, when we moved in, we knew the sheds were there. Fine, no big deal. We do have some trees there. They do consistently chop them down because of the power lines, which may or may not be an issue in the future. But I was not able to be at the library for the neighborhood meeting with Olson. But my wife did comment to me that Olson said to us, "Well, what's your problem with the commercial? You've already got sheds behind you right now, so that shouldn't bother you." Okay. It's basically two, two parking garages is what they are. So I think that that attitude about the development says a lot and how the neighbors feel about things. And on four or five occasions, I saw a company truck out on the property at The Knowles that basically had the name Excellence in Affordable Housing. So I'm not sure what Excellence in Affordable Housing will be doing out there if this is a 750 to million-dollar development of houses. So I think there might be a little bit of smoke and mirrors going on here, but I could be wrong. but I could be wrong. That's all I have. Any questions? Okay, thanks very much.
Any other testimony in opposition in person? Do we still have people on Zoom? Okay, sounds good. Is this Reed, John and Monica Reed? Okay. If you can hear me, you're welcome to go ahead with your testimony. We'll check it out here. Mr. or Mrs. Reed, are you there? The wonders of technology, right? Okay, they are no longer there. So there's no one else on Zoom, is that correct? Okay. Okay, we have concluded testimony in opposition. Staff questions? Come on up. Go ahead.
I, I'm going to ask this one first because Steve might have to look it up for us because I can't find it. What year was the Dial Community approved and/or built?
I believe that they were approved in 2015.
2015, okay. Can you repeat again? I know you did when you were first up here about how this does fit in with the comp plan.
Yeah, and my map is missing, so I don't have a map to show you again. But the comprehensive plan does designate a majority of this as urban residential. And so as I had stated, R1 is our largest residential lot at 9,000 square feet. Urban residential allows for up to 15 units per dwelling. So they're well below the density that's being proposed with 36 for the over 13 acres. But within urban residential, it also allows for neighborhood commercial as well. So mixing that with the current commercial that's already there, we felt it was consistent with what the plan shows for the future.
So just to make sure that everyone's on the same page, urban residential does allow for commercial, neighborhood commercial in it?
Yes.
So it is conformance with the comp plan?
Yes, we believe so.
What's the normal setback for, for, I don't know how to word this question very well. What's the normal setback for R1, I guess? You know, they're, I don't know how to word this. With that shed property, what kind of, that's right off of Old Chaney and behind the Burr's house. What kind of setback is that right now? Like if someone else were going to go in and develop an R1 property there, what setback would they have to use?
If it was going to be a single-family or two-family home on R1, if it was a rear yard, it'd be smaller of 20 feet or 20% of the lot depth. And if it was a side yard, it'd be 10 feet.
Okay, so 50 feet is well above and beyond?
Yes, and they would be up to 35 feet in height with a single-family home or two-family.
Thank you.
So someone made a comment that what was being proposed were actually smaller lots. I just wanted to clarify. It's, the setbacks are being asked for variance, but not the lot size. Is that correct?
Correct. It was just setbacks. I believe the minimum is 9,000 square feet, and I believe all 36 are above the 9,000 threshold.
There was also some comment about, or some discussion about it being pretty unusual to request a change in zone from R1 to B2 in Lincoln. I'd love to have some discussion about that.
Steve Hendricks with the Planning Department. So we've had some great questions from neighbors. So that was one of the questions. And so we did a really quick look at what are some of the other changes of zones we have. Now, you could go very narrow and just say R1 to B1, and there would certainly probably not be as many very narrow R1 to B1s. But if you look at the whole range of changes to commercial, let's start with that. So you've had some, like for instance, the Dairy Queen that you just had at 3835 South Street. That was R2 to B1. That was one house that was back behind the Dairy Queen. The house was demolished. There's only one other house on that block. So that one is R2 to B1, but that was another of the changes. You recently had changes on South 70th Street. There was a little church lot south of Highway 2. That was a change of zone to O3 from, in that case, it was AGR zoning. So you could have only had one house there. Not to B zoning, of course, that is to O3. Then you had to go up to 48th, North 48th and Holdridge area. You've had a brand-new redevelopment there where they knocked down some older commercial to do multi-story apartments on 48th. But the zoning on 49th Street was actually R. So that was a change of zone from R2 to B3 as part of a PUD so that you could eliminate that R zoning. And that was done on the first block north of Holdridge. And then recently, you had the second block north of Holdridge where you had the same thing. More of the R zoning was rezoned over to, in that case, B3 PUD to allow a mix of commercial and apartments on the first block. And on the second block, it was all apartments, but was in a commercial zoning district. Then, as was mentioned, you had the Bishop Heights PUD with a vast majority of it was B1. But you did have one single-family house up on Cuchara Drive. The single-family house was purchased by the developer. It, as part of the approval, was allowed for the house to be removed next to another house and a parking lot put up instead. And that was all along Cuchara Drive. Then probably the other one, a couple of other ones. At 68th and Pine Lake Road, you had the Tagle Hill Self-Storage. So along Pine Lake Road, there was a church going up to 70th Street. Your first phase was Tagle Hill that was AGR zoning, a much lower-density zoning district than R1 to H4. And then recently, in the last couple of years, you've had the second phase of that, that was 2021, where they then came in for approval to expand the self-storage uses. Then if you, so those are the ones that were in the last two years. So you get a little bit further back. At 59th and Pine Lake Road, you had the 59th Street Coalition PUD. The PUD allowed commercial uses along Pine Lake Road, behind some existing houses. One of the houses was in the PUD. Another of the houses asked to be out of the PUD. So it was behind, in that case, probably just one or two houses. We've had some unusual circumstances, like a parking lot for the Royal Grove on Cornhusker Highway was actually zoned residential, and that was changed from R2 to H3 commercial. You had the Firethorn Office Park in 2018, where you had AGR lots along the east side of 84th Street, south of the church that were changed to office, again, not to B1. And as was mentioned, the Costco Center was a change of zone from R1 to B2. So if you want to go just to the narrow, that was part of it. We've also had, in the Union College area, a Casey's Convenience Store at 48th and Meredith. They actually tore down a house to expand the convenience store. And that was one of about three convenience stores where we've had houses torn down to expand the convenience store to have. So you had a house next door to you, and that house was removed to allow the expansion of the convenience store. And then the CVS Pharmacy, if you're going back to 2010, that was at 16th and South Street. And that also removed several houses, expanded both B3 and O2 zoning for R2. Now, that is all change of zones that involved commercial. When you look at other changes of zone, certainly having a change in the use behind the houses is quite typical across Lincoln. And typically, you might have single-family houses, then behind them, somebody comes in and proposes townhomes. Or you've had people come in and propose apartments. And I would note Gate House Row, which was on the former Wayuka Cemetery. Here, you had houses either backing up or were across the street from green space that was, they thought, for a cemetery, but didn't have any graves in it. And that, of course, was sold and rezoned to R4 to allow 90 apartment units. And all of those 90 apartment units, of course, had to come and go in and out through the neighborhood. So, and that's just the first of other multifamily ones you could talk about. And if I could add on to the question slightly, one of the, I would say, one of the reasons we think this is a good project is because in the last seven years, and Ben's only been here a little over a year, so he hasn't seen them all, is how many proposals we have seen on this site. And this is by far the lowest-density residential we've seen on any of the projects. And most of the projects that were proposed also included significantly more commercial. And most of those, we're looking at proposing 10 to 15 acres of commercial, mostly interested in office. And then the other thing I would mention in terms of the B1, and I'll see if I can get it to come up here on the viewer. Let's see if it comes up. Okay. So on this north line here, up here, that parking lot is actually by a special permit. So it is actually outside of the B1 zoning. We'll turn that on. So if you look to the north here, that property is in a special permit to allow the parking lot. Most of the proposals that have come in have said, "Well, that zoning line is indefensible. How could we actually build some houses between this B1 and Old Chaney Road?" No one would buy those houses. So logically, if somebody was coming in to redevelop the B1, they could make a quite logical case for, well, what would we do with the land in between? We want to use it for parking lot frontage, put our signs, and try to minimize the impact on the neighborhood. The other thing that most people have also pointed out, and this is an older air photo showing when the golf course clubhouse and everything else, was that all up and down Norman Road, they had parking with a zero-foot front yard setback and the non-residential uses, the tennis courts, the pools, the restaurant, the parking lot, all along Norman Road. And so that was often used by people looking at the site as to, they would mostly focus all of the commercial along Norman Road because that was the historic pattern of land use, if not of the zoning. Now, in many of those cases, we said, no, we don't think that's a good thing to have 10 to 15 acres of commercial zoning here. And yes, that was the pattern to have the commercial use, the non-residential use, all the way up to the very last house there. But we think it'd be better to have more residential uses in between. And I would also say that because now, as you see on this, the R2 zoning is on the west side, most proposals came in and said, wouldn't it make sense for the R2 zoning to face the R2 zoning? We'd really like to rezone the east side to R2. And then most of the developments we had had townhome developments, as Brad mentioned. So that most were looking at somewhere of 70 units or so. We did have several apartment projects proposed, come in and talk to us. And we said, we just thought there was no chance of an apartment project being approved here. So they never even got to the stage of drafting up a site plan. But we did see several plans for other kind of uses. I could also point out one factual item here, and Tim C. can back me up in case I'm stating this wrong. The floodplain items that are moving forward, if they are approved by the City Council on January 9th, their effective date is March 1st, as currently drafted, for any proposals that come in after March 1st. So this proposal, rather it is, the developer agrees to delay it to March 13th, it would not matter. Any proposal that has come in before March 1st is grandfathered in because it was submitted before that date. And that really is part of the proposal of having a change of regulations is to have kind of a cutoff date. So there's nothing in this development that is trying to fast-track this to get around the rules. Olson Associates is quite aware that those rules are only going to impact things that were submitted after that date, and that is if the City Council approves them, and that is the date that stays in the ordinance.
I have another question, but I think that's for the applicant. Along those, that makes sense to me, what you've just said, Steve, in terms of the floodplain guidelines and the timing and all of that. That being said, when those guidelines were brought to us, it was all a conversation about what's in the best interest of the community and ensuring safety. And it was talked about how those were somewhat being fast-tracked in contravention to the folks who were on the opposite side because they were concerned about safety. So if there are safety issues, I'm concerned that we're letting this arbitrary deadline get in the way of that conversation. Does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Sure. So I have asked Mike Mendendorf to come up. One, to address, again, a lot of those items had to deal with measures in regards to property that is in the floodplain.
Correct.
And increasing the elevation of properties that are in the floodplain from being one to two foot above.
Understood.
None of these properties are in the floodplain. So from that standpoint, we wouldn't find that these properties that are being developed are going to be unsafe because they got approved before the rules. And so maybe I think it'd be better for Mike then to kind of address what other things that are in there. But again, as the City Attorney's Office would say,
They're relevant.
It's not particularly relevant because it's really not fair to any applicant to say,
Sure.
nor probably legal to say, "Hold it, we're going to make you wait till afterwards." But I think Mike could better address, well, what other things might have been in there or if they're pertinent to this or not.
Super helpful, thank you.
LTU Watershed Management, Mike Mendendorf, 555 South 10th Street. So the, this 40-acre idea was about a flood corridor, which do lie outside the floodplains. But because we are not changing that rule accordingly until that date, then we don't have that authority to enforce that on this development, so. And the other issues of like the outside drainage, that there's all these concerns about drainage issues, and they are existing drainage issues. So, and the way our regulations are set up is that if you bring in a new development, you cannot increase your water coming from your property onto other properties. And so that is why we have detention and water quality set up for these. And so that will be enforced. And so, and we can look at the other concerns from watersheds authority and look at, and while we're doing this, I mean, Olson has agreed to look at it a little bit more in-depth to make sure that they're capturing all the water that is being considered, so.
Great.
Any questions?
That's very helpful. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any other questions for him? Any other questions for Ben? Applicant rebuttal.
All in all, a good discussion. I went ahead and just a couple of comments that were made and real consideration, I guess. What we heard was keep the B1 and the R1. And I guess from, sorry about that. So there was, there, I get the feedback now. So the R1, if we were just going to the R1, if we kept the B1 and the R1, which, again, I don't think there's any interest, but I heard there was some interest from the opposition. The R1 could just come in with just a preliminary plat. And a preliminary plat meeting R1 requirements, some of the requests then on that side of the opposition is, well, the bigger lots to the north, you know, to the south, and then work the density. I think that then goes away because it would just become a straight zoning, straight density question. So our approach is tried to be a little bit more proactive and from the perspective of the CUP, for instance. We didn't have to come forward with the CUP, but we brought forward a CUP with the waivers so that we could request for the setbacks for the front and increase the rear. And I'm trying to think of some of the other ones, you know, the sidewalk that would definitely impose a burden, I think, from removing trees and landscaping from those owners. That was, I mean, that was kind of our good-faith effort of coming forward with the CUP such that we get some of those things. the CUP such that we get some of those things to help out the overall neighborhood. The, the question about increasing the density moving from south to north, what, what I've communicated is it doesn't work for the vision of the overall development. The villa concept is, needs to be consistent. So that we're going after that target. There's, there's, I say 36, only 36 in a matter, units here that we are trying to maintain a community, a style of development that I've developed from, or described from other developments in this. The drainage, let me talk about the drainage because I've come up, Mike explained it very well. I think I know what we're talking about, and I think, I think I can explain this fairly Norman Road sits here. The Knowles Street is right here. So I've, I've drawn this kind of crosshatch area. That, that area right now is out of our study. It's not included. But I think what I've heard is that there's limited infrastructure in that area. There's, there's storm pipe down here, and there's storm pipe at Old Cheney. There's nothing in between. So big downpours, the street is inundated with water, it conveys it down the roadway. And in some cases, from what I perceiving that the conversation is, water is actually going outside of the street, it's going into people's driveways, and it is going between homes, and it's going into the golf course. So I, I think that's it. We'll continue to, to work with Mike on the appropriate manner to, to handle these flows going into the development. It's, it's, it's not like one of those, open the drainage criteria and it says, do this, do that, because technically, all this conveyance is actually supposed to go somewhere, it's just happening to go into the golf course on major overflow events. So we're committed to make it that adjustment however we need to, and make sure that that's taken care of. As drawn, I do believe it's accurate because like if five, like a small events, like a small rainstorm, all of that just goes and stays on the Knowles Road. I'm not going to touch the new, I think the new criteria has been discussed enough, I think. One little clarification, when I mentioned the size of the villas, I, my, my comment or terminology is main floor. These are very likely to have additional space, they're likely to have basements. The design is, these are going to be flat, there's, they're not going to be a lot of grade changes, there's going to be, these are going to be likely like zero, accommodating zero entry, so, you know, not a whole lot of steps. That's the concept again, but these homes, again, going to be custom, they're not going to be just one after another, the same size and same build. It's going to be people coming in and making their own designs. The location of the, kind of live and learn, right? Live and learn mistakes or whatever. But I, I think it's an important conversation to have on the B2 conversation of what that, the commercial building is. That is the buildable footprint. It may be there, it may be shifted west, it may be shifted to the residential. There's no convenience, I guess, from the perspective of showing where it is, because when it's sold, there's going to be per zoning, there's just going to be a buildable footprint. And then the, the buyer, builder, and so forth will have to submit plans, those will be reviewed to meet zoning code. So it's shown, it could, it could be two-story, it could be one-story. So there's a lot, a lot of these commercial centers, they, they change particular, their, their custom fit to the particular user size and adjustment, those plans are made along The covenants, I'm going to let Andrew talk to about a little bit. I'll let you take that away.
Well, I guess there's two pieces. Again, you know, they mentioned the protective covenants. I, I think we, we know where they're coming from, we know what exists. I don't, I disagree. You've already seen how it's been historically commercial in the past. This is an issue that doesn't need to be really dealt with here because it doesn't really apply here. We're aware of that, I guess I, we probably, we probably disagree on the outcome of it, but I'm, but we're dealing with that. Or, or know that we have to deal with that, I should say. But broader sense, you know, like, I guess, so that, that's the existing restrictive covenants. We are, we do want to put on additional covenants, that's been mentioned. Some of the issues the neighbors brought up, again, really aren't, I mean, type of, type of facade materials, things, I mean, that's, that's not this level, that's protective covenants. We are putting protective covenants in place for the new lots. That's really controlled at the private level. Hopefully, we'll continue to work with the neighbors and try to figure out how this works. But again, we, we have brought up some of those, and I don't know where we stand. Again, I, I feel like we did, you know, some of these issues that were raised here, we had brought up, and, or at least there'd been some discussion, and I didn't really get a response. So I don't know where that stands, but hopefully, we can figure that out. But that really wouldn't, wouldn't be at this level anyway, it would be in the protective covenants that we do plan on doing. Sidewalk-wise, there will be sidewalks on all the new streets, both sides of the new streets. Norman Road, as far as the new development is, I, you know, if, to the, to the extent there's concern with the, no existing sidewalks, that really has nothing to do with the new development, they couldn't force them to put new sidewalks in anyway, and that has to be brought to the city, and that's a different issue. So we can do, what we can do in this development, which is put new sidewalks in on all the streets. And that will be done. I guess one other thing that was mentioned, I, I think somebody had mentioned the single, the single entryway to the road for the residents. By, under zoning rate, under the zoning regulations, you can have up to 40 dwelling units on the single, on a single entry. So we're at 36. So again, we're still meeting, meeting zoning regulations as it is, so, yeah, that's city standards.
I might touch upon that really quick.
Yeah.
Because there was a reference to a project that I was involved with over at Firethorn. We use it as a comparable. Somebody asked about the entrance way in and out. It's difficult in a built environment like this where there's not street connectivity. I think we've had this conversation before, and I'll do a little data over here, but, you know, we do a lot better job now of putting streets into, into golf courses and so forth so that those connectivity are in the future. This is Firethorn. We did work, I did, I did work on this project there, and it was one of the reference townhome projects I had for density calculations. This is Birdie Run, Juan Road and, I'm trying to remember how, there's, I think actually there's just about 36 units in this, but, so there's, there's about 36 units and townhomes in this, one, one way in, one way out. You know, there, there, then there are, there are these townhomes that were added. So this is, in essence, a very good example of kind of what's happening here. There was, this is, this is R, I'm trying to remember, it's technically R1 or the CUP, but you've got large family residences across, across the street from these homes. Not in the backyard, like, like here, but, I mean, it's just posing as an example, I guess, where we have done this and done something nicely for, for a project.
Thank you.
And I just have two final, I sort of, I more philosophical or bigger, bigger type questions, what, they've already been brought up, I'm just going to reiterate. You know, neighbors say, we're fine with the current zoning, leave it as it is. But also, we want larger lots behind us. And that's not what the current zoning is. So that's, I mean, that's not, I mean, R1 would allow for these 9,000 square foot lots. So it's, it's not correct to say, we want to leave it as is, but also, we want larger lots in the density going, you know, a bit more density to the north, north. And then, you know, waiting, and then again, waiting for floodplain regulations, that's, I think, been addressed well enough. But, but again, I don't think we want to shut down all, all potential development for, for things that we don't know are going to be passed. I mean, maybe that's what we're looking at and thinking about, but, I mean, nothing's, there is nothing that exists yet to, so it's hard to say, let's, let's wait and apply new regs that, you know, will probably be there, but I don't know. So, other than that, thanks.
Were you both involved with the retirement community on the Dial property?
I wasn't. Not directly.
Okay. Okay. It just, certainly the neighbors have an impression that the process was, and the opportunity for transparency or conversation has been very different this time than it was then. And I guess I wanted to give you an opportunity to just, to address that.
I already raised the one point that, I guess, one example I had of why that would be different. Again, I was not part of that, but when you, if you come in and say, right, in that, in that case, they were changing to R2. And so they were changing the zone, and then asking for a waiver to increase the height beyond what would be allowed. So by saying, so that's a different question of, of, we're asking for a waiver to increase the height versus, I mean, yes, this, this would effectively increase the height because B2 is a higher, has a height, but we're not, you know, the zoning ordinance presumably having the setbacks and the maximum heights, and there's a setback in B2 up, you know, adjacent to residential, all these things are put in there for a purpose, so presumably that's correct. I mean, that's, that's been well thought out, and we have the reasons for that. So it's only when you say, we're asking for a waiver to increase it beyond what exists in the regulation, that then we need to, you know, look at even a further setback. And, and again, we're still going with a larger setback, but that's my, I guess, one example why I think that would be different.
Thank you.
Yeah. I would just reiterate that, I guess, the changes, change zones, height, and so the setbacks, you know, are, are impacting, you know, provide a little bit more green space, provide a little bit of walkability. In this case, just even getting feedback from the neighbors. We, we've tried, I guess, to try to get some dialogue going. We delayed off the 7th, so we wouldn't be sitting here today. Little or no movement has happened, unfortunately, over those weeks. We met. We have a, a proposal of lists of items that we believe that overall dressed, at least to get the ball rolling, backed on December 6th. And to that end, another list, it came out last week and responded immediately. And so we do want to move this forward, and very open to, to talk about any of these. Maybe they're dead on arrival, I don't know, but we just haven't got any feedback. Can I address that topic since?
No. I'm sorry, unfortunately, you can't.
And, like I said, very open. We don't, we don't want to close the door on this.
Sure.
You know, approved or not, we're not going to walk away from this thing. We've, we've offered these, these are, these are discussable items. I mean, we want to honor that, so.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to closed public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reimanios?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
Move approval of change of zone 22035.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion, and let's.
Edens, sorry.
Let's have discussion on all three items, and then we'll proceed with vote.
I guess I'll go first this time.
Go, go for it.
Residential along Old Cheney, to me, doesn't make sense. Even the property owner has replaced his mailbox three times. Whether this is the right thing, I'm up in the air. I think you need to talk to the neighborhood, and especially the large one that you have currently pictured, backing up to an existing residential area should be moved. But that's, it doesn't have anything to do with the zoning. That's between you guys and the neighbors and, and working it out so it's better for that property owner specifically. But a business district along Old Cheney makes more sense to me than residential, because I've seen the houses and the fences and the everything hit by cars because people do race down Old Cheney, and people, people are crazy a little. Sense?
Go for it.
Awesome. I think this development feels real similar to other discussions we've had as commissioners with existing neighborhoods. I think the existing expectations and the changes need to be worked through. I feel like this hasn't been vetted to this point. So I feel like it's our opportunity to slow it down and not approve the current plan as it is proposed, or, and I think it's an opportunity for everyone to work together, to hear the input and think in the box and outside the box, because it doesn't always have to be exactly the same thing once everybody works together. So I will not be supporting the zone change use permit or the special permit at this time. I would recommend, because I think that we're hugely supportive of the residential infills, the redevelopment, and we encourage the reuse of sites, buildings, and developments, and having them be compatible and complementary to their existing neighborhoods and neighbors. I really do think, and I really respect how hard the city works on these things, and with the solutions and the needs of the landowner, I think they've done a good job of working towards getting this in front of us. However, I would encourage the neighborhood and the residents to work together with the developer. And to do that, the precedent was set with that, with the Knowles Senior Living Center. And maybe we can have, or encourage this group to take a step back, look at what was done with that development, so that they could work together, so that the landowner's vision could be captured, the developer's vision. And they can get villas, they can hear what the neighbors need in the area to keep the flavor of the area, and deal with a lot of the issues that we're talking about with Old Cheney at 45 miles an hour. I mean, those are real things as we look at our arterial streets and, and look at that with existing neighborhoods. And we do talk a lot about drainage, and it appears that it can be tweaked and worked out with the talents of the engineer. I think Brad and his team do a great job designing and working on that. And so I just wanted to make sure we just kind of take a breath, and we're not on a push, 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 and we don't need to be. So I'll be voting against the motions.
Additional discussion?
Somewhere, somehow, there is a big disconnect here, and I'm struggling to figure out what that is. Because I hear from the neighbors' testimony, and there's a lot of misconceptions out there. You know, like, this isn't in conformance with the comprehensive plan, or, you know, there's just, I, I don't, I don't know why we're, we're missing here, but there are increased setbacks to your properties. There is increased screening, and, but you guys don't think there is. And so I don't, I don't understand what is happening. But with that being said, I'm not going to support deferral because you still have four weeks in between us, and by the time you get to city council, and I think that you guys should be able to work this out, because I think you're getting a lot of what you want, but somehow you don't realize it. And I don't know how that's happening. So I can't, I can't fix that. But I, I think that, I think that you're getting a wonderful project, and you're getting someone that is willing to make concessions, has made a lot of concessions. I mean, this isn't apartment buildings. I, I think this is, I mean, I wouldn't want to buy a house on, and live on Old Cheney. I wouldn't want to live that close on a busy street. So I think that this is a good project. I think there's just a lot of misconceptions, and I don't know how to clear those up, because even, even during the hearing today, they're trying to clear them up, it just wasn't hitting. So I don't, I don't know how to fix it, but I'm going to support the project because I think it's good.
Any other discussion?
Since we're discussing all three, I have more comments. So, you know, I looked, and, and that's a golf course, we bought it there, it's been there for years and years and years, and I, I really, I was reading all the letters that came in, read everyone, really felt for, you know, we bought a property, this isn't like buying on the south edge of Lincoln and thinking, oh, I got to develop there, and I can't believe somebody else wants to develop there. This is an existing neighborhood. So I want to know that was heard, it was heard very loudly. I do believe people want smaller lots. I think there's a market for high-end, smaller lots. Whether I'm right or wrong, I don't know. Some of the ones that are facing sideways, there was comments about that, and the setback isn't as much, but that does limit the number of neighbors. You go from one, some of you commented that three were backing up against you, and when it's a side lot, I looked at the map, and then it's only one compared to three. So you kind of lose some setback, but you gain less neighbors, if that's correct. So I too would be supporting this project. I think work can be done on the business district to make it better, but the residential area looks like something, even what you guys kind of wanted, other than the lots aren't as big as you wanted. as big as you wanted.
I'm really torn. I, I have heard the neighbors, and I understand the idea that leaving it as is, is, you know, somewhat in hopes of ensuring that change doesn't happen, and especially with regard to the, to the business area, the business district. And, that being said, it also makes sense that it would be business along Old Cheney as opposed to residential long-term because of the way that Old Cheney has developed over time. That being said, I'm really struggling, there's this doctrine of reliance. I mean, these, you know, this has been understood to be R1. And I, and there was a section that was, that was set aside for B2, but with the property owners, in particular on the Knowles, who abut this property, they, they've invested in their properties, they own that property with the idea that there was R1 behind them. The most restrictive type of zoning available in the city of Lincoln, residential zoning available in the city limits. And changing that to business is a little problematic for me. I'm struggling with that change of zone. I don't necessarily think that the way it is makes sense long-term for what we're doing. I'm all over the place right now, but I also love the villa concept. I think that, I understand that it's very different that, from what's there now. It is, I believe, I believe it was commented that this is about a, you know, enhancing the character of the neighborhood. It's a new component to the neighborhood, it's different than what's there now, but that doesn't mean that it can't complement it. And, living in a planned unit development myself, and understanding how those different types of areas can mesh together and build a cohesive neighborhood that is multi, provides multiple options, is really attractive long-term. So, with that, I, I do believe that I will vote to deny the change of zone, although I am in favor of the special permit for the CUP. Any other discussion? Shelley, please call the vote.
Core?
Yes.
Let's just say this is for 5.1A, change of zone 22035.
Cruz?
No.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
No.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
No.
Motion failed, 3 to 3.
I'm going to make a motion then for, to recommend denial for use permit 22013, to allow a use permit with an associated change of zone to B2.
Is there a second?
Second, but I have a question. Can we vote? Can we approve the use permit and the special permit without approving the change of zone?
Don't we have to have four, one way or another, and we didn't?
We had three and three, it didn't pass. Coming back.
Timothy, City Law Department, 555 South 10th, I think that's what it is. So the change of zone and I believe the use permit are both conditional upon the change of, the, excuse me, the CUP and the use permit are conditional upon that change of zoning. Right now, you don't have anything approved on the change of zone.
Correct.
It actually would be held over until the next hearing when there would be other, presumably other members of the board here. With that in mind, it may actually be better to defer voting on the use permit and the special permit until the next.
That makes sense.
Planning commission meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. So we will defer voting on 5.1B and 5.1C. The public hearing will, I mean, the public hearing is closed. However, the vote will be brought forth again at the next planning commission hearing.
Do we need to make a motion to defer the?
That's what I was going to advise, is to, I think you'd make a motion to defer voting on 5.1B and C, I think are the correct numbers.
Great, yes.
So take it up at the next.
Or change my motion for January 11th.
So Christie is voting to defer.
Moving.
Yes, that's what I meant, moving. Moving voting. You're moving to defer. And there was a second?
Yes, that was me.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is to defer voting on use permit 22013. Shelley?
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Motion to defer until January 11th.
And then I'll move to defer special permit 22038 as it reads.
Second, Core.
Shelley?
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if you'd just make clear on the record that there won't be public testimony at the next hearing.
That's right. The public, the public hearing is closed, and as a result, there will just be another vote of this body. There's typically nine members, there's only six of us present, so at some point, we'll have to get a vote one way or the other. So, that's how that will happen procedurally, if that makes sense. With that, at this time, if there's anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda, now is your time to do so.
I just would encourage all parties to talk between this time, and see if you can get some things worked out and figured out and understood.
What is that date?
January 11th.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, move to adjourn.
Second, Core.
We're missing Commissioner Campbell.
Shelley? Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes, please.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
We are adjourned?